Call to order, the August 27th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Bobby call the roll.
Rich Dally.
Present.
Gigi Dubec.
Here.
Paul Fisher.
Here.
Robert Hertzell.
Here.
Carrie Ann Warley.
Here.
Carla Coleman.
Fred Stacer.
Here. Okay, next item on the agenda, well, first of all, Carrie Ann is sitting in tonight for Thunder King. Next item on the agenda is the traditional 30-second moment of silence, so if you would at this time be silent for the next 30 seconds, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Chair will entertain a motion of the approval of the July 23rd meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the July 23rd meeting. Revisions, checkpoints, whatever, no? All right, Bobby call the roll on the minutes.
Paul Fisher.
Yes.
Rich Dally.
Yes.
Gigi Dubec.
Yes.
Robert Hertzell.
Yes.
Carrie Ann Warley.
Yes.
Carla Coleman.
Yes.
Fred Stacer.
Yes, okay, next item on the agenda is individuals who would like to testify tonight need to be placed under oath at this time, so if you would, please stand and the Secretary will raise it.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the McNabb House and Botanical Garden, major site plan, 25-12, five zeros, two. Location's 2250 East Atlantic Boulevard.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to make sure that the audience has probably received two various copies.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
No problem.
Okay, before we go forward with the revised agenda, the items number one and number six were, have already been pulled off, six have been pulled already off before tonight, and I forgot I need to, item number five, we'll skip item number one at this point, and we'll go to item number five, which is, was, there was a request by the applicant to, to move it to the next meeting, so.
Mr. Chair, I think that, looking at the audience referring to, if I may assist you a little bit on this, and that was that there was an agenda copy that went out early, the first one for the Planning and Zoning Board, on that agenda, there were six items listed. The first item on that involved a LN 658, and the last item was LN 770, both dealing with a plat review and a text amendment related to plat review. Those items, based upon the, our office, the City Attorney's Office, was recommended to be removed from the original agenda for the purposes that the Florida Legislature has now made the plating process an administrative one, and therefore, no longer would this board have the task of reviewing a text amendment, I'm sorry, reviewing plats. That would be taken care of by our Development Services Department. And so, the first item, again, on that original agenda was removed, and then the text amendment, because it is being driven by the Florida Legislature, our office took the position that it needed to go directly to the City Commission, not necessarily reviewed by this board, based upon the fact that the law has now changed. That left, from the original agenda, item number two, LN 704, dealing with the McNabb House and Botanical Gardens, it was a major site plan, it left LN 755, which was a major administrative adjustment, LN 768, which was the 2400 East Atlantic Mixed Use Development, which was a major site plan, and also LN 769, the Industrial Redevelopment Flea Market Site. Those are the four items that now appear on the current agenda that many of the individuals in the audience have before them, and so, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware how that change occurred, also wanted to make sure that the audience understood how that change occurred, and should there be any more changes in the agenda, the board can absolutely rule on those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Counsel. Okay, so, also, we received earlier, staff did, on item, what was item number five, the industrial development flea market site, site plan approval, we had a applicant request postponement to the next meeting, so I'll take that out of order at this point, and go ahead and, anybody would like to say, go ahead and approve that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that LN 769 be deferred per the applicant's letter.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, do we have any questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, Bobby?
I'm sorry, can you? Time specific.
Oh, to the next.
Per the letter, which is September 23rd. Date of our September meeting, Bobby.
September 24th.
24th, 2025.
Carla Coleman.
Yes.
Paul Fisher.
Yes.
Rich Dally.
Yes, but I also, it should be the 24th, because that's the Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the month. Didn't you say the 25th? I'm sorry, I thought I heard the 25th, I apologize, yes.
Gigi Dubec.
Yes.
Robert Hertzell.
Yes.
Carrie Ann Warley.
Yes.
Fred Stacer.
Yes, okay, now we have an agenda that we're gonna work on, okay, so.
I would like to make a deferment for three.
Ms. Dubec into the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been asked by the Commissioner for District One to defer three items, LN 704, LN 755, and LN 750, let me put my glasses on, sorry.
68.
756. And the reason being is, we received a lot of requests from residents that asked for some more time to review all of the documents, as well as make sure that it's aligned with the upcoming city budget process, and they just wanted an opportunity for more public input, and they didn't feel that they had enough time to do so.
We have a motion, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Well, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second for question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not seeing in my, I have the updated agenda, I'm not seeing a LN 756.
No. It's LN 7768, is that what you're talking about?
I don't see.
We got 755 and 768.
Yeah, is it not seven, I'll just make sure the motion's correct, it's not.
Okay.
LN 756, it's LN 768.
So, go ahead, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so, is there any other comment? Anybody want to discuss this? I think for technical reasons, we should separate the three of them for voting, so I would, I would request an amendment to, to the first one, that we could talk about each one of them individually. Are you willing to do that, or?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so, we'll amend the motion to take item number one first, the, the deferment for the first item. Okay, anybody have any discussion on these items?
For just, for the first item.
For just number one, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hartzell, go ahead.
McNabb House, that house was moved in 2020? I mean, there's been five years, oh, there's been five years gone by. Five years worth of budget talks, five years worth of commissioners, three different elections since then. This has gone on way too long to table it and ask for more time. I just see a piece of history just sitting there rotting away on a piece of land. I will not be voting to defer it.
Okay, anybody else?
One of the reasons that we got the request is the plans, you're right, it has been vacant way too long. It's been a problem for all of us that have had to look at it vacant for five years, but the plans have also changed pretty dramatically, as well as the budget, because you had Mad Room Hospitality back out, you had another consultant back out, and the Botanical Gardens is a new addition to the plans, so they, the request that I saw in the notes were, the residents wanted more time to review it.
Oh, okay, um, okay, I, yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Hartzell, we, this, this is since 2020, the July meeting of 2020, this has been a botanical garden, some of the things have changed and have moved around in it, and if there are people here who would, who are concerned about this particular issue, not, not allowing it to go forward and be discussed is just another way to hide or be less transparent, not more transparent. The, traditionally, we, we have taken, it does take a long time to get things in the CRA moving forward, but, but I would say that since we've had this year and, well, over, I don't know, how many, how many meetings have we had, do you know, Mr. Chairman, of the E-CRA this year?
This year alone, si, or four, five, I've total.
Five meetings, okay, so each of those five meetings, we've had, we've had discussions and updates, people have had chances to come, and that's just in this calendar year. In January of this year, we had a meeting, we had a, I think it was January of this year, we had a joint CRA and Plenty Parks and Rec, was it January of this year, I believe? And that was an open forum at MLU Olson. So, whether or not everybody has gotten all the information and whatever, the last bit of changes, which it's obviously been five years as a botanical garden, and each of the changes, just like everything else that goes into the, goes into the process, to the DRC process, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, this one went in in April of this year, so from that point on, we were, those of us from the, both the P&amp;Z and from the, from the City Commission, were actually made aware that in the May, May document that we received from the Development Services Department, that this was eminently coming up, so I don't think that there has been a, I don't see a reason to postpone it, it would go on forever, and if we don't hear this, at the very least, if we don't hear it, then the people that are here to, about this particular project are not going to have any more information than they had when they showed up today. So, I think we ought to hear it, and then maybe at that point, it would be appropriate, if you would like to make that motion again, and people were convinced, but I, I think it's making it less transparent by not going forward with this item. So, obviously, I'm not going to be voting for that either. Anybody else? On a deferment for item number one.
Gigi Dubec.
So, wait, am I voting for?
If you want to defer it, you vote yes. It's your motion.
The motion is to defer, so you'd be voting yes to defer.
If you want to defer it, you vote yes.
Yes, I want to defer it.
Okay.
Rich Dally.
No.
Paul Fisher.
No.
Robert Hertzell.
No.
Carrie Ann Warley.
No.
Carla Coleman.
No.
Fred Stacer.
No, okay, second item, that was up for postponement, it's item number two, so the next two are related to the 2400 East Atlantic, the second item, of course, is the major administrative adjustment, and the Chair will entertain any discussion about this item.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Coleman, go ahead.
I have a number of questions about, I've been through all of the material on this project at least twice, since we got our packets, and I still have a number of questions, and so, I'm not sure whether I can support the motion to defer or not, because I need to hear the item, so I can't support at this time a motion to defer until I hear the, whether the applicant can answer some of the questions I've got on the project, so I'm gonna have to oppose the motion at this time, until we hear the item, so I'm sorry to say I can't support this one either.
Okay.
Mrs. Coleman, I, your speaking now just has actually aligned with what I need to do as well, because I do have questions, I reviewed the material, there, this, the reason I seconded initially was because this was, this agenda item was included in the deferment, I have some serious questions about this particular item, and, but you are correct in saying that we should go through the process, ask the questions, seek the answers, and make a decision after the fact.
Anybody else? Mr. Hartzell?
Just have a question on LN 755, is, it's the first time I did a major administrative adjustment, I just want to know from Counsel, is that something that goes to the board after us? Is that something that goes to the board, I mean, the Commission, after?
No.
Or where the final say on it?
Okay. It's the same as a part of the site plan. Is that it? Okay, so I'm not going to repeat what they said, but I have the same concerns, so. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, Bobby call the roll on a deferment on item number two, please.
Gigi Dubec.
So, I'm gonna say yes, because we're gonna ask questions about it, right?
This is to defer.
This is motion to defer, your motion to defer.
So, no.
Going to, no, okay, right?
Rich Dally.
No.
Paul Fisher.
No.
Robert Hertzell.
No.
Carrie Ann Warley.
No.
Carla Coleman.
No.
Fred Stacer.
No.
Okay, item number three, which is L N seven sixty-eight. Okay, so that item was the third item that was in the package, and, um, that would be the actual major site plan for the mixed-use development, for this item.
Mr. Chairman, my previous comments stand.
Okay, Mr. Hartzell.
I think if, if we're actually going to wait until
Later.
They present, then we should just withdraw the motion, but it's up to you, you made the motion.
Um, I've been asked to, you know, to withdraw it, so, um, I'll go with it.
Mr. Dubec?
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I think what, I think what, again, since we talked about it earlier, I think what the board is, is intimating to you is that because you were the original maker of the motion, because it sounds like everyone on the board is agreeing to first hear the presentations, and should there come a time that you would like to, um, remake the motion, or to, to state the motion again, you have that option again, but the general gist of the board is that they want to hear the presentations. So you now have an opportunity, because you've heard your colleagues a- agree to hear the presentation, you have the option to withdraw the motion as it relates to deferral, but you do have the option later, after hearing the presentation,
Okay.
to, to make that motion again. So would you like to withdraw that motion at this time?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, so is there any other discussion on the motion then?
Nope.
Okay.
Is there a second on this motion?
Yeah.
Uh, if we took the three items together, there was a second.
We took them together, I split them up to just for discussion purposes and voting purposes, so that we had a chance to, though I think we're fine. But that's a good point. Okay. Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, Bobby call the roll on item number, uh, three.
Gigi Dubec?
Yes.
Rich Dally?
No.
Paul Fisher?
No.
Robert Hartzell?
No.
Carrie Anne Warley?
No.
Carla Coleman?
No.
Fred Stacer?
No. Okay. Now, back to, we're back to the regular agenda, right? Okay, item number one, McNabb House and Botanical Garden, it's a major site plan. P and Z twenty-five dash twelve, five zeros two. Location's twenty-two fifty East Atlantic Boulevard. Mrs. Stanton, you are presenting. You're up.
Yes, I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Pamela Stanton with Development Services. This agenda item is for the consideration of the major site plan application for the McNabb House and Botanical Gardens' major site plan. Planning and zoning number twenty-five dash twelve, zero zero, zero zero, zero two. The project is located on the south side of Atlantic Boulevard, just east of Federal Highway, as shown on this location map. Hatching on the map, uh, covers the full block between southeast twenty-second and twenty-third avenues, uh, the same as the existing McNabb Park that we have today. The project is located in the T O, E O D. However, existing parks and recreational areas designated as P R on the use areas density regulating plan of the E O D are governed by the Parks and Recreation Zoning District Regulations. Project includes the old McNabb House, as you know, which was relocated to the park in twenty twenty, with a temporary use permit to allow for staging until the site plan is approved. Regarding the proposed uses, the plan is for the house to become a restaurant. And the park also includes botanical gardens, which will be based on a sensory experience, more on that by the applicant, by our a- agent. Indoor and outdoor event space, a classroom building, and a maintenance building. And regarding the building heights, the new buildings and the kitchen addition, uh, kitchen addition to the McNabb House are all one-story, while the McNabb House is two stories, right? Yes. The site plan was reviewed by the D R C on April twen- ever, excuse me, April second, twenty twenty-five, and was approved by the A A C, uh, just last month in July. Also on this slide, there is, uh, some text about the public purpose adjustment that I, I want to talk about a little bit. The public purpose adjustment applies to this project, and I've mentioned that Parks and Recreation zoning regulations are applicable to this project. And those regulations are, um, for lot coverage and building setbacks are more restrictive than the T O and E O D regulations, and they require less lot coverage and greater setbacks. So having multiple buildings for a variety of program functions, as proposed on this project, it increases the lot coverage and, and bringing these buildings, the new buildings, and the, uh, closer forward to the street is consistent with the context of the surrounding area in the E O D. And both of these points I just mentioned align more with the intent of the T O and the E O D. Also, certain aspects of the interior design of the buildings don't allow for the compliance with the design standards for fenestration requirements for transparent windows facing streets. Therefore, because the project addresses a public purpose and provides a public benefit, a public purpose adjustment can be used to allow deviations from these regulations. So these, these are the major site plan review standards listed here. You have a ton of backup in, in, uh, available on how these standards have been met. In the staff report, the drawings and documents have been uploaded to the backup folder. With that, should the board find that the application has provided competent substantial evidence to satisfy the review standards of major site plan approval, the Development Services Department recommends including the following conditions. One, obtain public purpose adjustment approval in accordance with code for relief from the Parks and Recreation requirement for lot coverage and building setbacks, and for the requirements of the commercial, institutional, and mixed-use design standards for design requirements for building fenestration and transparency where back-of-house operations are abutting the interior of street-facing walls. Two, a five-foot right-of-way dedication along East Atlantic Boulevard is required for compliance with all Broward County trafficways plans, plan, and be completed prior to building permit approval. Three, and last, are the standard conditions of approval and/or specifications required prior to building permit and zoning compliance permit issuance. That concludes my overview of the, brief overview of the McNabb House and Botanical Gardens site, and I can answer any questions you may have, and turn it over to Mr. Kirk Olney of B and A to describe the project in further details.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of staff before we move to the representative applicant?
Karen, are we going to, um, have an opportunity to talk about the traffic patterns and things like that after the?
Uh, yeah, we can.
Okay. Or should I ask staff now?
Uh, I think you'd probably be better off to wait until after the next presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, board and chairman, appreciate the opportunity, I'm Kirk Olney, a landscape architect with Bremel, Ahemel. I am project manager for the design team, I'm here representing the CRA, who are represented here, Nguyen, Tim, and, um, Sarah, they are our client, and they brought us on board to help them with this project. Um, I'm going to cover some of the stuff that Pamela's already covered, um, but a brief overview of the, the project, the design philosophy behind it, then I do have architects here to talk about the different buildings. We couldn't do things simple and have one architect design all the buildings, we had to have an architect for each building, so, and it's paid off, um, I think. So, um, we have renderings and drawings to demonstrate that, and I hopefully, um, you all will agree with that, so. Again, the, the project is on East Atlantic, just east of U S one. And there's the existing aerial, you can see that this is taken after the house and the garage, um, were moving, were moved. So there are some pictures of the, the house and garage that were moved, I think everybody is very familiar with that. And then here's some existing conditions of the park. What's important about these pictures as it relates to the proposed improvements is the mature existing canopy. It is impressive and fabulous, and as a landscape architect, it's just absolutely just my wet dream, it's s- sorry for the poor analogy, but it's just wonderful. And so we work in very, very hard to preserve as much of that as possible, um, in the design of what we're doing. And I'll walk through that, I want to get to that. So this project, um, being a CRA project, it's about economic development and, um, improvement to the community. And so when we sat down and started designing this, um, the idea was, provided us about the house and turn it into a restaurant. So the idea of the botanical garden, um, was presented, and we had many, many meetings talking, talking about that. We did work very, very hard to develop a framework and structure for what will become that botanical garden, and how those uses are going to function. We did have a vision, and we want this to be open to the public. We don't have all the details worked out about operating hours and when the people can get in and can't get out. But in general, on your average day, the intention is for this to be open to the public, free of charge. So if you want to go to the restaurant, you're going to have to pay, I'm sorry. Um, and there are other opportunities. We want it to be self, um, within the project that are going to generate revenue, which are going to help us pay for maintaining the project, or maintaining the project. We want to keep the community involved, we think education is very, very important, and we've worked that into the design and the thinking. Safety, and and so, these are some of the imagery that we have developed to try to help everybody understand what we want this to be, this is what we're working towards, so that we can have art classes and botanical garden walkthroughs and performances. Um, we think there's a huge opportunity for art in the project. So, um, this graphic, um, I just want to pop, hopefully everybody can see that, I can point their attention to the, the winding walkway, which I'll get into explaining why that's the way it is in a minute, but you'll see some, um, kind of hatched areas. Those are elevated boardwalks that we are intending on using to provide a walking surface while not disturbing roots of the trees, and, and if you don't know, they're the lifeblood of trees, and so if we disturb the roots, then the canopy doesn't do well. It's very important in maintaining a canopy, that we maintain healthy root systems, and so we've worked that into the project. And that's what this slide is meant to demonstrate or depict. So this is the renderings that we have developed. We have black and white drawings, but they're kind of boring, so we're going to talk about the, the color of the renderings. The left-hand side is the, a rendering with the existing tree canopy, so we don't really have any proposed trees shown in that, this is just existing. The right-hand side is actually the same plan with the trees gone, so it's quite naked without it, so, again, very, very valuable and very, very important. I think that the, do I want to use this slide, no, I'm going to go back, sorry. So quickly, I'm going to walk you, uh, counterclockwise, um, around the garden, just to orient you, starting in the upper left-hand corner where that kind of large trapezoidal shape is, which is, um, the event pavilion. This is meant to be a rental space, um, not sure if we're going to have it, um, associated with a vendor working on, um, managing the restaurant, or if it's going to be, um, somebody else. But the idea, it says event space that can be rented out to generate money, has, and you'll see images of this, it has an outdoor patio, which can be used for outdoor events in inclement weather. There, there's also, green space in front of it is an event lawn, so that we can have an outdoor event. And there's a stage, in the very center, right next to the green, is a very large tree symbol. That is a, a massive, I think it's a twenty-foot diameter trunk tree, it's massive. So it's the center point of the projects that we're working hard to preserve that, but also work the design elements around it, so if you can imagine a giant canopy with an event lawn, you know, with a performance underneath it, that's the, the kind of the idea. So that's the event pavilion, moving down to the lower left-hand corner, you see two, two buildings kind of going off in different directions. That is the main entrance into the garden. And one building is going to be a classroom, and it has, um, spaces inside of it for, um, events or gatherings, say a homeowners association wants to rent it for the evening, um, or there's after-school classes, so there's restrooms in there. Changing rooms, storage. The other building, which is to the bottom, is a maintenance building with a office facility and a, what we want to call a garden store type of event place. Following on around in the upper right-hand corner, that is the original house that was moved. There's a, kind of a piece between that and the larger building to the south of that, which is kitchen. Um, the, the piece in the middle is the restroom, and that's meant to service or provide the required restrooms for that kind of facility. Also between that and the event pavilion is a small square, that is actually a garage converted, we hope, to a coffee bar. And that whole space between the event pavilion and the house is meant to be an outdoor cafe. So, the other point about this, it's very important to understand, is this is an internal-focused design, because we want to bring people to this location, to have an experience, gather, um, for nature, education, recreation, um, or some site, some sort of a special event, wedding, a bar mitzvah, whatever it may be, so that, um, that is why the buildings are along the perimeter, so that we can leave the space for those kind of elements or activities inside the park. This also helps us preserve those trees, so if we stuck a building in the middle of it, the event pavilion and the garden all independently. So we've thought about that, and we understand that we may want to have a wedding while the restaurant's open and the garden's open to the public. So that's all worked into the design. Um, it's very nuanced, um, and very hard to read at this scale, but we've thought about that, so we have a separate entrance for the event pavilion, we have a separate entrance for the restaurant, we have a separate entrance for the garden. If that makes sense, I hope it does. So when we were working through all these different ideas and plans, some brilliant person came up with the idea of creating sensory garden, so basically a garden for all of the senses. So I'm going to quickly walk you around the garden, I mean, it's, it's, um, automated, so I don't have to figure out clockwise or counterclockwise. I do want to point out that, so there's the five senses, but there's also a history garden in the middle, there's an arrivals plaza experience, we're going to design that, it's going to be fully integrated into the garden, as well as the cafe, which, again, we want that to be garden-esque-like, and so we have some imagery of that as well. So starting, um, I guess at the lower right-hand corner of the screen, um, is the arrivals entrance that we had talked about. So, again, here's some imagery, this shows the idea of a garden store, places to sit, offices. Then moving on around, we get into the, the different senses, this is the sense of smell. And that's a, a langlang tree in the right-hand corner, that's what they use to make shell number five. So those kind of things, art as well, other things besides plants that smell, um, elements worked into the garden to create that fully immersive experience. Let me move around to the, uh, site garden, again, very visual stunning things. The other thing that is very important to understand that we're trying to accomplish is, we want this to be very, very dynamic, so that if someone comes in March, they have one visual experience or tactile experience, and if they come back in June, or October, or in December, a different experience, so a great variety in plant material and art installations to create that. So a great variety in plant material and art installations to create that. And that's what this would represent. So this moves around to the sound garden. And it's very hard to see, but on the left-hand side of that purple space is the first of the playgrounds. That's for the smaller children. So we want to integrate a playground into this project. So for those of you who don't remember children and their development, there's typically playgrounds for kids that are two to five, and then again from five to 12 because they have different development needs. So we have a playground for each age group so that we can provide that experience for the whole community. Our intention and our direction is to provide playgrounds that look like art and art installations, even if there aren't children or adults playing on them. We've worked very hard to do that. And there's some imagery in the other garden that has the other playground that shows So then we kind of move around to the center space. And this is what we call the sculpture garden and history garden. We want to use this opportunity to tell the McNabb family history. It's very rich and vibrant and interesting. And we also don't want to forget that, you know, this was a veterans dedication at some point. So this is the opportunity to do that. We also want to use it for art, either permanent or rotating installations. Again, the power to evoke that kind of awe with very spectacular art, it just, you can't put a value on it. This is the taste garden, which is not incidentally by the kitchen. It's intentional. We do not think that we're going to grow food in this garden for the kitchen. There's this thing called the health department, which is a challenging thing, but we do think it's a great opportunity for people to understand what grows in South Florida, things that are interesting and different. Then there's opportunities for demonstration education. So then we move around to the cafe garden. This is the space between the restaurant and the coffee bar essentially. Again, outdoor eating in a tropical environment. That's the intent and that's, you can see the imagery, that's what we're trying to work towards. Let me get to the event pavilion. Yes, the event lawn. Again, you can see in the right-hand corner, that's some of the fencing that we intend on using around the project. The perimeter fence will probably be six or eight feet. Internal fencing will probably be four feet. It's just for pedestrian control. It's not really, internal fencing is not for security. Again, this is a space to have a performance or a wedding. And so you can see in the middle, the trees are turned off. There's a platform which is going to be raised and elevated to protect the roots. It also creates that kind of stage effect that an elevated platform would do. He's excited too. So moving on around is the last garden, which is the since the touch garden. This is the other garden that has a playground in it. In the lower right-hand corner, you can kind of see the idea that we're going for, very spectacular artistic playground. That's a playground. It's a real playground that has been installed. So that's what we're aspiring to. We also think that there's opportunities to do things with paving that create touch experiences. Again, this is for all ages, so that gravel and sand and those kind of ideas. So in the upper left-hand corner, you can see a little key with a red arrow that kind of helps you indicate where this is intended to be. Again, walkway through the garden, lush tropical. And in the center of the garden, this is around the sculpture. History garden is a koi pond with a bridge and a very special, unique experience and surrounded in art tucked into the landscape. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Emily. I'll let her introduce herself and she's going to talk about the house, restaurant, kitchen, coffee bar.
Good evening. I'm Emily Garen with Crabhead Architectural. And yes, I will be talking to you about the McNabb House. As mentioned, it is being turned into a restaurant and it will have, in addition to the south, will house restrooms and the kitchen. Here you can see the floor plans. It's the basement level on the left. When the house was moved, it did have a basement added and we're going to activate that space as well. The first floor is in the center and then the second floor is on the right. There will be seating on all levels, including out on the balconies, so you can have a view of the gardens. There are some of the elevations of the outside of the house and kitchen building. You can see some of the materials that are being used across the bottom of the page. The existing house is brick, as you know, and the kitchen addition is going to use large format porcelain panels and board form concrete for the utilitarian aspect of the This is the elevation that would face the gardens and that large outdoor patio space. On the right, you'll see the kitchen building and it does have a large outdoor patio with a trellis over it and there's a bar there as well. And then to the left is the existing house. This would be the opposite facade facing, I believe it's 23rd. On the left is the kitchen and that is a large blank facade, but it will have a large mosaic mural on it. So we're going to be activating that with some art and there will of course be landscaping in front of that as well. So this is rendered of that elevation and you can have a better visual of what it will actually look like. So now we'll talk about the garage very briefly. It's existing two-story, very small space. Going to activate it as a coffee bar. You'll just have a small counter space in there with a single restroom for any patrons that need to use it. It would really just to be walking in, make a purchase and go out and sit in the patio area. And the second floor is just meant for storage. So the exterior of the garage is not going to see much change, other than the garage doors will be replaced with glass to open the space. And this is what would be facing Atlantic Avenue, including all of the greenery. And now I'm going to pull up my colleague, Ms. Yee, so she can talk about the event building.
Hi. My name is Melissa Bierman with Crabhead Architecture. So the event building is at the corner of 22nd and Atlantic. This is the floor plan. You'll see there is a banquet area which can be divided into two, as well as a small entry vestibule, bride room, changing room, storage, bathrooms, warming kitchen. And there is also a large patio in the front facing the event lawn that will be covered. These are the north and south elevations. The intent was to have the building open up towards the gardens, so the roof peels up facing the gardens itself and has a large amount of storefront glass facing the gardens. But we also provided some clear story windows along Atlantic, which is the top elevation, to kind of activate the street a little bit. So if there was an event, you might be able to not necessarily see what's going on, but you would see, you know, motion or activity or lights or something going on there. And we have a corner of the building that's at Atlantic and 22nd, which would have large format tile with some artisan panels on it. These are the side elevations, the east and west elevations. And here you can see how the building tilts up towards the gardens itself. And we have some storefront along 22nd, along with that wrapping porcelain tile and artisan panel. And then on the east elevation, we have some clear story windows, which would be towards the garage building. Here is a rendered elevation along Atlantic. You can see there would be a lot of landscaping, but that corner piece with the tile and artisan panel would be visible, as well as some clear story windows. Here is this rendered elevation along 22nd Avenue, which would be the, you're looking at basically the entry towards the event garden lawn and facility. Here is just another version looking towards the kitchen building beyond. And here is a view from the event lawn itself. And now, Paktiker.
My other architect, who does exist, ran into some traffic, so I'm going to walk through this. So this is the landscape architect version of it. So again, the idea of these buildings is to be utilitarian and simple, set into the garden space. We provide the two classrooms. I think there's a divider in there, so there can be multiple things happening. There's restrooms, there's changing rooms, storage, HVAC, these typical things. So that's the building that's kind of on the bottom. And then on the right is the maintenance building. So that also houses the restroom for the gardens. We don't want people that are in the garden going to the restaurant to go to the bathroom. So we divided one for them, seemed sensible, as well as indoor maintenance facility and space, as well as the large kind of rectangle in the upper right-hand corner, which is the outdoor yard, which would be walled, so that no one sees any of that. So again, the finishes and materials are very similar to the event pavilion. This was really an economy decision, just going to be more economic to use similar materials. So again, form, concrete with the raised panels, same thing as the event pavilion. So these are the black and white elevations from the different angles, which aren't nearly as good as the rendered ones. So this is from the south, again, the concrete, the formboard concrete, the raised panels with landscape framing the entrance. This is another one. This is looking west. This is the other side of it. That's the conclusion of our presentation. So I guess, questions or discussion?
So in closing, I'd like to add some stuff, if I may. Chairman?
Okay. Go ahead. Tran?
I don't know if a lot of you are aware, but McNabb House Botanical Gardens, there are about over 200 CRAs in the state of Florida. Every year, we have an annual conference through the Florida Redevelopment Association and every CRA submits their best projects. In 2001, we submitted for the McNabb House and Botanical Gardens and we won an award from the FRA. You see the condition now, it hasn't even started, but we won this award. This award is about how we can make a community impact, whatever the problems are for that project, how we solved it from an economic standpoint, but also from a social standpoint. As you know, the park has suffered for many years. And in 1989, we pulled out minutes from the Parks and Recreation Board saying that there is vacancy and homeless issues. This is 36 years ago. It still suffers today. We've taken a lot of time through this process to figure out how we can change the dynamics of this park, make it usable again, make it a world-class venue for our residents, and it's taken a lot of time. I think we're there. I think the whole addition of the sensory garden really helps it out. So let me pass this on. What I'm really here for is, I have a big concern. Section 155.2407 of the city's zoning code deals with site plans. It says, "Site plan application for major site plan shall be approved only on findings that there are competent substantial evidence." You all know that. You deal with this all the time. The record is made here with the application, the staff report, the testimony, the evidence presented, as you heard. It is not made on social media. As an applicant, Pompano Beach CRA is entitled to due process, just like any other applicant. Due process under Florida law requires, at a minimum, impartial decision makers. The CRA wants to place on record objections to participation of a certain board member, Ms. Dubeck, because of her social media posts. I would like to put on record some of those posts. District One Park has sat vacant for almost six years. The CRA has delayed this project far too long and now we're pushing a $27 million plan that has been mismanaged from the start. Instead of forcing through an overpriced unsustainable project, we should be keeping the space aligned with the beach area's coastal feel. Maintain tennis courts and pickleball courts, which are actively used, include a snack bar, beverages, not other restaurant groups serve overpriced drinks and most residents can't afford. A botanical garden's expensive to maintain. If the city can't keep up the beach landscaping in good shape, how can they maintain this? Fix what's in front of us before taking on another vanity project. McNabb House has been a debacle. It's been moved twice. It belongs in a historical area, not in a community park. Two consultants have backed out, red flag for their project's viability, yet spending on this continue. It's time to pause the project and focus on real needs. That's just one post. Another one is, "How long has our community park with McNabb is still vacant? Going on six years, they're asking $27 million. People against bonds, trim the fat." Another post, "Say no to bonds. Pause CRA fix roads. Pause CRA fix drains. Pause CRA hire staff. I vanity projects. Save our parks. Say no to commercial." Another post, "We don't need a $22 million E-CRA bond issued by taxpayers' expense. City continues to ignore essential infrastructure while handing out millions to vanity projects that serve a select few. Loss of purpose," is another post. "Parks should be public green space for gathering, play, and connection, not commercial enterprise." Again, mismanagement. Project continues to be a trouble trend. Costly bonds with little visible progress. City proposes $27 million park conversion. Nobody asked for. This is not revitalization, it is mismanagement. This is community theft by holding public land hostage for years and then advancing project residents. Reject city leadership is eroding public trust and undermining the very purpose of redevelopment. Doge is in West Palm Beach. This is another one. Next to community concerns about CRA park redevelopment. Extravagant costs for a commercial-style attraction, restaurant, botanical gardens when basic services go unafforded. Vacant for years. Public land has sat idle for five years, not only to be repurposed for planned residence neither asked for nor support. I can go on and on, but I'm not. Some of you may have seen these, but our concern is that Ms. Dubeck is not impartial decision maker who can or will make her decision based on the record. We object to her participation in this hearing.
Okay. Bye, please. Do you want to? Did you have any comments about that?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Only as to, I think, the applicant's request related to the abstention of Ms. Dubeck in the voting. It's the only thing I wanted to address.
Okay. So are you done?
I, I, I didn't know if you were going to let me.
No, go. I'm waiting on you.
Assuming the applicant is, that I heard him correctly, there is nothing in the statutes that would require an abstention from voting. In fact, the impetus is that if you sit on a board and you hear an item, you are to vote, unless there is some sort of ethical conflict. And unless Ms. Dubeck has personally...
And unless Ms. Dubeck has personally, or a relative of hers who's going to benefit from this project, she does not have an ethical conflict. And again, there is nothing in our code, there is nothing in the procedures of this board that would require her to recuse herself, or even allow her to, you know, not participate at all. And so, therefore, Ms. Dubeck, unless she tells me otherwise, she has the ability to vote on this item. However, that being said, we can talk about later on, the board's participation in social media. That is of grave concern for me as counsel to this board, as well as our office, the Office of the City Attorney, when public officers, which everyone on this dais is. As a public officer, you are held to a certain standard in participating in social media. Does not mean that you can't have a Facebook account, or Instagram, or whatever you choose to participate in, but there are certain restrictions which we can talk about later in the meeting. I don't want to hold this presentation up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, is there any other presentation from?
No, that concludes our presentation and our objection. Thank you.
Okay. Now, is there any, any questions, I think? Well, does anybody have any questions at this point? Go ahead.
I, can I start?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, we'll start on this end.
It's more of a, just a layered comment about what we're, what we're doing tonight. Tonight, we're not going to, we're not voting on the, how we're going to fund this potential project. What we're voting on is the actual site plan. You know, and there was a lot of time, and even more money spent trying to develop this, and while I have reservations on how potentially it's going to get funded, that's not up to me to decide. Tonight, we are looking at and voting on the project in front of us and the site plan. And I just wanted to make that very clear, like, that's what we're doing, correct, Mr. Chair, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, we, we have the, those, those standards that we apply to every project. We do not, to kind of paraphrase what you said, we do not decide the financial side of projects that are city projects, and we do not decide whether the applicants who are private investors, we don't check out their financial statements either, it's not, it's not in our purview, so. So, I think your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Mrs. Coleman, go ahead.
I just had one technical question on the presentation. Can you give me the square footage of the event center again, please?
Nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine?
It's modest, it's a modest square footage. Thank you. Thank you. I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah. Seems to be a debate now.
Yeah, I know, I'll take it.
We'll take you, it's your word, ninety-two. Go ahead, Mr. Hartzell.
Let's say, I got some question for Mr. Tran. I know you've been through these plans, and I've seen your presentation, I think you did it about a year ago. Have you, you've gone through all these plans, from the four architects or whatever, right?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the details, and is this, is the CRA happy with what plans are presented to you today?
We are very happy of how this project has evolved and the plans have evolved. This started out way back when, you know, before we moved the house, honestly, you know, back in 2018, 2019, before we moved the house, we had to get the ECRA board comfortable with us moving the house. It started out as a patio, an oval great lawn, it was going to be bed and breakfast, so it's evolved over time. You know, the layout has always been, well, look, you know, let's, let's do a basement, and if any of you haven't seen the basement, I think it's pretty cool, you know, it's a first, first-house restaurant with a full basement. So, you know, we tried to make this something really unique that, that no other city has, you know, we tried to make this a venue that isn't just a gardens that you see once and you don't visit again for, for many years. So, you know, how it evolved in the gardens itself, with the sensory, and the, and the different type of plantings, and the visual aspects, every time you visit it, it's going to change. So, not just the site plan in the house, but the whole layout and how it flowed. The first iteration, as you recall, if you went there, was a bigger lake. It was a big lake around the tree. You know, our designers and all the public input has narrowed that down and said, you know, this is a waste of space with a lot of, lot of, lot of lake. It's expensive, number one, but it's not usable space. So, what has evolved is, is I think we calculated now, we have about 75% open space on the site. So, you know, what used to be maybe about 60 or 50%, we're up to 75% open space. It is an open space garden, botanical, educational facility. You know, we, we thought about, you know, you saw pictures of bird watching, you know, and art exhibits. This is a venue for everybody. If we would have just settled with, with, you know, like on the pier, on the beach development, if we would have just settled with a regular student garage, we would have never gotten the oceanic, the architectural styles that we deserve as Pompano. We set the tone on development of what we want to see, and it has worked. It's been a very positive formula for us, and we've been very successful at it. So, long answer to your comment, absolutely, we are very happy with the site plan now. We will always evolve, as, as in programming, to be more inclusive of everybody, and that will continue. But the site plan, the layout, the flow, we are very happy with it.
The reason I ask you that question is, I've had the joy and the agony of working with you on a bunch of projects, specifically in Old Town, where you have fought with us over placement of an FPNL meter. I know you like details. I know you have gone through these plans. I have watched those buildings, at least in Old Town, go from a $2,000 annual tax payment to a $20,000 annual tax payment. Stuff's paying off, the city. The stuff that the CRA has done in, in the beach, just absolutely phenomenal, world-class beach, who have raised so much tax revenue for the city by your actions. And I know that you and Lisa, but look at details, you guys are so detail-oriented, there's nothing for it, other than showing up to work on Monday through Thursday. I think you guys, you guys work on Friday?
Oh, yeah, my phone rings all the time. We do, too.
The reason I ask is, it means a lot to me, because I know you. I know how you work, I know how your team works. If you've went through all the details, and you feel that this is what you like, it's important to me and my decision-making.
You know, just going back to their track record, and, and you're right, you know, it takes time to get it right. You just want to just go out the gate and just build something, just to build it. It takes time, and details is what we do. Valuations is why we are here. We build value, but also, our projects, our CRA projects are very transformative, but they are our quality-of-life projects. It's not all about the tax revenue and stuff, it's trying to make that project, that venue, better for everybody. And it's not just for, you know, one, you know, if we build tennis courses just for tennis players, right? This, this is a garden that can have endless programming opportunities. You know, we can't directly fund education, right? We can't put CRA dollars towards education and education programming, but building a venue like this that allows kids and schools to have field trips to is phenomenal. It's, it's an opportunity that we can check all the checkboxes with our redevelopment projects.
I have a question for, any staff? Thank you, Tran. Typically, we get, like, staff recommends approval with conditions, is this, does staff recommend approval with conditions?
Yeah, I thought.
There's three conditions.
Three conditions.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because usually it says, "Staff recommends approval," or "If it approves, then it needs these..."
You're right.
Or three conditions.
It should say, "Staff recommends approval" with these three conditions.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I got.
All right, Mrs. Worley, go ahead.
So, I've got a couple things. One, this is probably for Nguyen, Mr. Tran. So, the renderings, are those fluid? Because, you know, certainly want to protect the charm of the house, so, you know, I saw a little bit of blockage and it would...
Yeah, so, so you've probably seen the, the kitchen annex building, so that was one of those iterations we went through. Well, should the kitchen match the house? And, and we were, the first iteration was, it was brick-like the house, but it was really overpowering, because what we, we looked at was the event pavilion, right? How cool would it be to have a 250-seat event pavilion in a botanical garden? You know, we, we looked at Miami Beach Botanical Gardens and how their model worked. You know, at the time, their, their wedding venues were two years booked solid, but, you know, ours, our venue is, is much better. And we have an event pavilion. The, the reason that, you know, the architect said, "Let's change the style so it wouldn't overpower the house." The size of the kitchen had to be that size, because we needed to also service the event pavilion. Instead of building a full kitchen in the event pavilion, it's a warming kitchen, and then you use the, the full kitchen annex to do the catering and so forth for that event pavilion. So, it, it may look overpowering, but once, you know, we can put some, some, you know, maybe sponsorship art on, on the walls, on the outside, and it has landscaping, you won't see it so overpowering to the house.
So, yeah, I was going to mention, you guys mentioned the mural and the art, so maybe just tying, making sure that ties, I mean, it's such a beautiful historic home, you don't want to take away from, from that, right? So...
And, and that's why we, we did a kitchen annex, instead of break into the house and build it in the house, it just, we wanted the house untouched, kind of have that historical charm that the house has, and have the kitchen as a totally different-looking architectural style.
Right, so, now the hard part, the parking, the traffic. I live down there, so, you know, already it's a challenge. So, knowing, coming out of that, I'm trying to remember, what road is that first, I guess fir-, there's no, you can't obviously make a left, you have to make a right, because there's a median there, correct?
There is no median, as I recall. You mean Twenty Second or Twenty Third, coming from Second?
So, I'm going, I'm talking about going on to Atlantic.
Going on to Atlantic, okay.
But I just want to make sure we're addressing those...
Well, Twenty, Twenty Second is the west road, on the west side, and Twenty Third is on the east side.
I'm talking, right, I'm...
You're talking about Second Street, the cross street?
Second, yeah.
That's the one that has a stoplight over to the west.
Oh, is that, okay, so then, then I misspoke, so.
So, I can address parking. There is plenty of surface parking. If, if we went over all the lots that the CRA owns in the area, it's quite a lot. We plan on, on putting on-street parking on both, you know, Twenty Second and Twenty Third, as well as Second. Right now, there's not a lot of on-street that's already built there. I don't know if you have been aware, but we did buy the Wells Fargo drive-through facility, so we did demolish that. That is extra parking as well. We own the block, about half, half of the, the block to the west, and there's three big, large grass vacant parking areas there. We own the CrossFit, and there's a parking lot there. We own the Bayside Building, which is the two-story, which is a parking lot there. Long-term goals, we know we need a parking structure in this area, so we are slowly assembling that for a mixed-use development, you know, detail on, on first, and a parking structure. So, that's the long-term plans. On the other side of US One, we own almost half that block as well. So, we've already planned it, like, if, if we have, you know, kids coming in on buses, you know, they can get dropped off, but then the buses can park on our, our vacant lot by the, the tiles of Pompano area, just all that space we own as well. So, surface parking lot, we have enough to cover this venue and the restaurant and the, and the event pavilion. Long-term goals is structured parking.
Okay, so then, goes back to traffic. Have we done a study, have we thought about that? What's, is there any concern from your standpoint?
Not a, a, a big concern on the traffic generation, but we can always take a look at that. You know, the restaurant is probably going to be from noon until evening. Is the event pavilion, when, when that happens, at the same time, or, or in the gardens, if there's a, a venue going on, you know, an event going on in the gardens? I believe we did our analysis on the parking.
Yes, hi, Sarah Mulder, CRA Project Manager. So, part of Milo Ahmell's scope includes a traffic study.
Okay, okay, good. Obviously, this is going to be a destination, right? So, what, what I like about it is the fact that it's not going to just be for, you know, this park, or this, you know, the botanical gardens, or the restaurant, or the event space, but it's also going to bring in people for the, the community and the other local businesses. So, I see, again, you know, we definitely need to address the traffic, you know, but if you've done the traffic study, then what, what did that show?
No, no, it's upcoming.
Oh, it's upcoming, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have any, nothing? Okay. I, I'm just going to say one thing before we open it up to the audience, because we haven't done that yet. I've had the, the, I guess it's privilege, to be on the CRA, ECRA Advisory Board for, since about 2010, and went through the 15 years it took us to redevelop the beach. I was there for about 13 of those years. At times, it's painful, but at times, it's very rewarding. And I think we're finally getting to that stage, like, I feel like this is almost like the parking garage getting built, and we can see all these other things getting ready to happen, so. I feel like we're kind of at that stage, and I, by saying that, I also wanted to put on the record, obviously, I've seen this evolve the whole time, because I'm on the ECRA Advisory Board. I've been briefed numerous times on this, so. Mr. Fisher, would you like to go?
Do you want to echo that? I am on the ECRA Advisory Board, I'm also the chair of the board. I've seen portions of this presentation previously, but my vote tonight will be solely on the evidence that was provided.
Likewise. Okay, and with that, I think we should open it up, if there's no other quick questions now, let's open it up to the audience, and so if you'd like to speak, you can come to this podium, speak for three minutes, give us your name, and tell us what's on your mind. Come on up. Right here, ma'am. Just your name and address first, please.
My name's Marilyn DiMartini, at 1110 Northeast 27th Avenue, Pompano Beach. I think this has been a beautiful presentation, but it raises a lot of questions, and I think that's why the request was made to defer this until more of these things could be answered. And I think that the traffic that was brought up is very important. We already have a serious traffic issue in that area, and to do a traffic study after a site plan is approved, I think is kind of putting the cart before the horse. There are other questions that I have about the time that it's going to take to build, the budget, the staffing of this, who is going to maintain this? I mean, the gardens look phenomenal. I mean, these are, you know, the kind of developments that we see in cities like Chicago, Boston, Atlanta. You know, we're a population of 120,000 people here in Pompano, and I just think that this is very grandiose for our beach community. And I think that those are the kind of questions that the community would like to have answered. The plans all look, you know, beautiful. look, you know, beautifully done, very professional. But I just think the scope of it and the budget, how are we going to pay for this over the years? Not just the construction, but the maintenance of it over the entire life period of it. And I think when we look at city staffing, the maintenance is going to be incredible of this place. And I just think that we really need to look at the overall scope of it before we approve an overall site plan that includes a great many things that maybe this community wants, or maybe it doesn't want. I don't know how much input the community has had in these plans. You said that there has been input, but I, I haven't seen an opportunity to comment on this until tonight. So I just wanted to come and listen and learn, but in listening, those are my comments. And I think that the concerns that have been brought up are valid ones and need to be addressed before an overall approval is made. Thank you.
Next person? Name and address, please.
My name is David Rich. I live at 1050 Northeast 28th Terrace, in the Harbor Village Island. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the chairman for all the work that you guys have done. I've lived here since 2012, and I have not been to a board meeting till today. And I see all the hard work that you all put in, and the time that you put in, and I am quite impressed, and I want to thank you all for your work. I understand that tonight has to do with site planning, not with the finances. And so I don't think it's appropriate to comment on the financials until the time comes that that is brought up in the commissioner's meeting. What I'd like to do is tell you that as far as the site plan is concerned, I can understand why your architect, your main architect, is so excited about his plans. Be too excited, but. I think it is absolutely beautiful, and I would be proud to say that I am a Pompano resident. When I moved here, even to the island, half of the houses were run down. The value of the houses weren't great. I bought my house on a short sale. The houses on my island, there isn't one of them that I wouldn't be proud to say I would own. Everybody has taken pride in their ownership. When I first moved to Pompano, and originally I'm from Boca Raton with all the snobs, in a guarded community, I moved to Pompano and was quite embarrassed that I'm in Pompano. That embarrassment was wrong. And what you guys have done in the last 13 years, you and your predecessors, you should be extremely proud of yourselves. The city is amazing. The people are amazing. The businesses are amazing. The beach is phenomenal. People move to Pompano now because of your beach, and your restaurants, and your piers. You've got playgrounds there for young children and families. You've got beautiful parks. And now you're going to put in a garden with, with a restaurant, and to say that we don't need restaurants in, in our city is wrong. We need commerce. We need business. I saw what you did with downtown Pompano. It, it looks just like Las Olas, as you're working so hard to take these dilapidated old buildings and these crack attic places, and turn them into an ongoing, successful little area of the city, that I'm proud to take people to the South Restaurant, and to the Vault, and to all the new restaurants that are coming by. I know I'm out of time, but you guys have done so much to our city to improve it and make everybody's life better. Three minutes just isn't justice. But thank you for all your time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, all right, folks. Next person? Name and address, please.
Moca McGee, 951 Northeast 27th Avenue, Pompano. I grew up.
I'm sorry, can you give your name one more time, please?
Moca McGee.
Thank you.
Uh, my family came here back in 1965. So I've been here in Pompano for 60 years, and I'm not going anywhere. We live in paradise. It wasn't like this when we first came here, but it was cute. It was really cute. But I'm here today, you saw my grandson, for him, for generations to come now. So, first of all, I wanted to extend my thank you to our professionals here in Pompano, to the city of Pompano, that have put us together. It's absolutely beautiful. It's going to be a happening place and a happy place, not just for my two-year-old grandson, but for grandmothers like me, that can go to the park and not have to worry, feel secure. The education is going to give it, the restaurant, the bar, the ice cream cones, whatever it is. It's going to be fun, and it's beautiful, and it's about time that Pompano has something like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person?
David Hall, 290 Southeast 8th Court. I think you look at this and what you all are voting on tonight, for as far as the site plan goes, I, I can't see anything, certainly not as knowledgeable as you all, having reviewed more of this and, and understand more of it than the average layperson, but I can't understand why it wouldn't be voted approved for what's been talked about. This is an absolute phenomenal presentation, a phenomenal idea, and for anyone who thinks that it may not fit Pompano Beach, well, I've lived here for the better part of three decades, and the Ritz-Carlton never fit in Pompano Beach, the Waldorf Astoria never fit in Pompano Beach, Armani Towers, nationally world-renowned, recognized development coming to Pompano because of Ritz-Carlton, Waldorf Astoria. They're not building anywhere else. They could build anywhere in the world. They have a couple, two or three of them, and they're all in places that I'd love to be able to go. So you have that, and you have the W residences, which actually sits inside the CRA, but those other buildings are outside the CRA, and the revenue generation will be tremendous. This is about a park. It's about a park that is different than anything else we have. We don't need more pickleball courts. We don't need those types of things. We need stuff that's educational. We need things that are going to bring children here, but also generate, you know, revenue. Profit is, profit's not a four-letter word, right? It's okay for us to generate some revenue. How much money do we spend in the Northwest on a couple of parks, maybe one, 20-plus million dollars? It'll never generate a dollar's worth of revenue. And that's okay, because they're parks and kids. And my kids played, and I coached, and, and they grew up in Pompano Little League, and Pompano Football, and all those types of things, and that's what we need. But there's nothing wrong with taking one of our numerous parks. We have over 700 acres of parks in this city-ish, and turning it into something that is world-class destination will pay for itself and end up being a revenue generator for the city of Pompano Beach instead of a drain. So, yeah, there are concerns, right? There are parking issues. There are going to be traffic issues, but there are a ton of restaurants opening up, up and down Atlantic Boulevard, more coming. You're going to have that bank building, that you guys are all going to be talking about, right? They're selling that bank building. That's going to be 400 and something units going right there. So, what does that mean? Yeah, more traffic, but it also means people living there feeding into the park, patronizing the restaurants surrounding where they are. So it's self-sustaining and self-generating, really self-fulfilling. So, I, I thought this looked phenomenal. I've seen it half a dozen times. I went to the presentation earlier this year, and it, we thought it was great. So, I think you all need to continue to, to push forward with this, and, you know, make sure that we have something in this city that's going to be a park, open to the people, but also take a shot at generating revenue and end up paying for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, I tell you, that's an insult.
Last three minutes.
Before you even start talking, they're, they're beeping you out. Okay. I think you need to recycle that. You need to give her three minutes. So it's not working?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
Wait, it's, it's up to three.
Oh, okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Andrea McGee, 133 North Pompano Beach Boulevard, Pompano Beach, Florida. As former city commissioner in District One, I was blessed to have been a part of this from the get-go. And I remember, when they first decided to move this house, we, it was coincided with the beginning of COVID. And it moved, and then everything shut down, and we still were able to work on it. And yes, it's taken a while to get to where we are today, but in my opinion, that's been a blessing in itself. From the beginning plans of the idea of a botanical garden, and going down and touring Miami Beach, beyond that, I've gone into Fairchild Botanical Garden. I already knew Bonnet House, I've been going to more of their events, just to see what could be possible. And to see where the renderings have come to today, it's been worth the wait. Figuring out that we could fit the space underneath the house, moving around the venue so it makes better sense. The sensory idea is just so cool. And the event space is what's going to help, or is what's going to take care of maintaining the beautiful gardens. You know, when we toured Miami back, again, this is pre-COVID, they were booked out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, two years in advance. And wedding venue spaces have already gone up in cost and value. And I know a good friend who's trying to plan her daughter's bat mitza for next year. There's no, we don't have an event space of capacity in the city that can hold these types of events for residents, for visitors to come in and experience and explore. And additionally to that, I've heard from so many people who are interested in the edu-, getting involved in the educational concept, kids gardening, teaching herbs and fruits and growing and things to kids. Really excited about that as well. And then the additional programming that I've seen at these other gardens. If Fairchild does orchid festivals, chocolate festivals, you know, mango festivals, I think is one of theirs down there, strawberries. You can do so many things and special event features to really just keep the community involved, using all the spaces. And the restaurant on top of it allows you so much accessibility. I couldn't be more proud of my city, my hometown, and really excited to hopefully see this project come to fruition. And thank everyone's staff, everyone involved, for all your hard work seeing it through this far. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person?
Serica Peterson, 3025 Northwest Second Street. I first started looking at this project more in depth when I had Nguyen Trent on my podcast. And he did a, what I would say, a brief overview of it, but I had been seeing it around. And once he did that, I, I, I love researching. So once he did, I started researching, what are the benefits for gardens? Says it builds strength, burns calories, and reduces the risk of chronic diseases like heart disease and diabetes. It also improves mood by lowering stress, anxiety, and depression, and boosts cognitive function by stimulating memory and focus. I wanted to bring that up, because right around that area, my mom became a permanent resident here in Pompano, specifically District One, the Pompano Beach Cemetery. As of April 5th, she was buried there. And every time I go there, I leave very, very heavy. So when I think about the fact that this city has taken the, the opportunity to put something there that can improve the mood for people coming to that area, specifically the cemetery, you can walk there, from there. And I too, like Ms. McGee, I, I have a, not my grandson, and I have a five-year-old as of this Saturday. Just as long as this project has been ongoing, I would say, coming from the Northwest District, five years to start doing something is nothing. We've been waiting 33 years for things to get done. So you're right on track, actually probably ahead of time, considering you had COVID-19 that stopped two years of, of movement. So I do want to speak to the fact that, you know, yes, this is something new in the city, but, you know, I think about how it's going to improve the mood of those people who are visiting loved ones in that cemetery around there, who could possibly create some type of programming that helps with that, because it, it's heavy every time I go into District One to visit my mother. So, I also, Nguyen brought up about the taste aspect, and being able to include the beans that were a big part of the Northwest history, and what we did in this city to help build it up. So, this project is a part of the history, and as historic preservation is a big part of development, I don't see how you not do this project. So I'm, I'm gonna, you know, support, and I hope you guys vote for it, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. With that, I think we'll close the public hearing portion, and bring it back to the board. So, do we have any other questions? I know, well.
Mr. Chairman, I should have a comment.
Yes, Mrs. Coleman, go ahead.
I've lived here for 42 years, and have watched that part change, from basically a shuffleboard gathering point to a place where you didn't want to walk through. And I'm very excited about this rendition of the plans. Having visited botanical gardens throughout this country and Europe, this is a place people will gather. And when spaces are activated, they're safe. With all that's going to be going on there, I, I think that it's going to be a major addition to what we have to offer here, as some of you have talked about tonight. It is somewhat of a leap of faith, but it is also the first time that we have designed a public place that is self-sufficient, that we're hoping is going to be self-sufficient. I'm not sure how it could, this one could fail with an event center like this. And so I'm just really proud to see these plans before us tonight.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Fisher?
One question, probably for Nguyen or Sarah, I'm not sure. Last community involvement meeting, was it well-attended? Was there a good input, big support?
Yes, Nguyen, Transcera Director. The last one we had was the master plan update. That was in January 23, 2025, this year. We had standing room only, Emma Lou Olson Center, probably 110-plus people. So, very well-attended. You know, on Serica's podcast, I did remember one of the, the biggest people that, that were against it from the beginning was Kay McGinn. And, and at the end of that meeting, after she saw the, the presentation, she came up to me and says, "It's a great project. You did a good job." So, it, it has evolved into a phenomenal project, as you've seen it, and, and, yes, it was very well-attended.
Just a couple of additional comments. Obviously, I think it's going to be, the design tonight and everything, it's going to be a unique attraction that is going to bring people to the city, that residents are going to be able to enjoy. But I'm mostly excited about is the Pompano Beach students, that goes to all the schools all across the city of Pompano Beach, an avenue where they can go attend field trips, which they might not be able to go to attend field trips outside the city, but they can do it in the city of Pompano Beach. So I'm super excited for that opportunity, so I want to make that comment.
Okay. Mr. Dally, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh.
Are we excited? I think we got some more people want to talk.
Oh, really? All right, well, I'm sorry.
But you can, you can make a motion when, when we get back to that.
Okay, I was just trying to get there.
Oh, Robert.
You go next.
Yeah, well, I'll work my way down that way. Go ahead.
Go from outside to inside. I'm just. I'm going to be here a long time. All right. First, I wanted to make a comment that I, my law firm represents the historical alliance of Pompano Beach. They preserve, promote, and share the rich history of the city of Pompano Beach and its historical history. So it's, this would be included in that. They're a non-for-profit, and we represent them pro bono. I just wanted to make sure the record's clear that it's out there. They don't have anything to do with this project, per se, but they, that, that's a goal of theirs. I just wanted to put it out there. It won't affect my vote whatsoever on. I just wanted to put it out there. It won't affect my vote whatsoever on whether this is compliant with the rules. Second, the comments that were made earlier about traffic, the time, the budget, the staffing, I think that's all really important. But that's not what we're here to do. That comes later. And they're ultimately gonna be responsible for their budgeting and their staffing and taking care of that garden. And I pray like anybody else on this board that all that's taken care of, that this does not become a dump. I don't think it could get any worse than where it is today. So the bar is pretty low. But I do, I do appreciate those comments. And I think that staff in the CRA should listen and make sure it becomes a viable botanical garden. The last thing, you know, and I don't think it has something to do with my vote, it has to do with someone else's vote. And this board, we're very close. And I feel close to everybody. I don't like when somebody comes up and hints that there might be bias. We all say things on the internet, and we all say things to each other, not us together, but we say things in public that we might not have meant. Or, but it doesn't affect our biases when we're up here. We leave that outside. And I don't think that you would be biased in any decision. So I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate when someone disparages somebody that sits on this board.
Well, thank you.
And that's all I got.
Mrs. Worley, you want to go next?
Oh, hold on a second, sorry.
Prior to Worley speaking, I need to ask Mr. Hartzell, you mentioned that a client of yours currently retained?
Currently retained, pro bono client, has an interest in preservation of history. And they're a non-for-profit, educational, non-for-profit that is, their interest and purpose is in maintaining the history of the city of Pompano Beach, not unlike the Historical Society.
And is that particular entity currently engaged or a part of the current project that's being discussed before you?
No.
Okay.
I don't think they're even an organization right now.
Okay, that's what I needed to clarify.
Right.
For purposes of the record. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mrs. Worley, you're next.
I was also gonna say that I appreciate all the comments today. And I think, you know, there are obviously some concerns, as I discussed, as well as others. But it's really not our job to address those tonight. What I can say is that I drive around that park often, and it's still very scary to, you know, you certainly wouldn't be walking through there alone, or even, I wouldn't bring my kids there, that's for sure. And the other thing I would like to say is, you know, when my kids come to me, my children, who are twenty-five, twenty-two, and nineteen, and they talk about this project and, you know, wanting to move back to Pompano Beach, and many of the reasons they want to is because of everything that has been developed and everything that is coming, you know. So it's not just about how it is at this moment, but we want to make it an exciting place where our children want to come back and live and, what do we say, work, play, and have, what is it? Play, work, and live.
Live, work, and play.
Yeah, live. Thank you. So I think it's a beautiful project. And, you know, again, if we can address those issues, I think it'll be an amazing thing for many, many years. And it does bring in, you know, it will bring people in to the community, and then we'll also share with other restaurants and, you know, the other things that Pompano Beach has to offer. So, thank you.
I just want to say, I think that you did a fantastic job on the plans. I think they're absolutely beautiful. I mean, they're incredible. My biggest, biggest, biggest concern is the maintenance, because I know what it's like when we have four days of wind, when we have torrential downpours, and when we have hurricanes. Because I live by the beach, and I know what it's like to constantly do all of that maintenance. And it's a lot. And so when you have exotic plants and a lot of beautiful botanical gardens, it gets very, very expensive, and it requires a lot of staff. And as beautiful as I think it is, and I do, I think you did a tremendous job on the plans, I'm deeply concerned about maintaining them. That's my only issue that I have. That's my biggest concern.
No, I haven't gone yet, sorry. You know, we're not getting away without Fred talking, right?
I was trying, Mr.
You're trying, you're trying to preempt me?
I was trying, Mr. Chair.
I got it. I don't blame you. I mean, handing me the mic is a dangerous thing, that's for sure. I wanted to drop back to how great an experience, after two thousand and eight and going into, when, after Barry Doxwell got elected, and what that whole experience of recreating the beach was like. And people doubted us a really long time. I mean, I know, because in two thousand and sixteen, I lost an election over it. So I can tell you that there was a lot of doubt, okay? So, but I believe in that. And I feel like we collectively, the city had worked really hard. It took from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-three to get, to get, I guess it's How You Brewin' done. And that was the last thing. So these do take a long time. People, we've taken a pretty fair amount of time to get to this point. I know that having been on the board with, that board actually has a really good chairman, unlike this board. But the, that, we, there is a lot of, not just thought, but there was a lot of thought of how it evolved. And I think that the amount of work and the amount of thought process that goes into that is going to pay off in the long run. And obviously, I'm gonna be for this. And I want to say one more thing, because, and it has to not do with this specifically, but it has to do with the point Mrs. Peterson made. The, we're coming. We're coming. It's gonna come. I built stuff in that Northwest CRA, and this morning, four hundred people went to work in the buildings out there. There was a lot of people who have given a lot, and you and the folks in that district have waited a hell of a long time. And it's gonna come. I just, I know it's gonna come. I believe it. So I want you, everybody to, you know, to, I'm like overly optimistic, I guess, or something, you know? My father, my father told one of his friends one day, he said, "You know, the thing about Fred is, he just doesn't know when to give up." And I really feel like that's the attitude that we've had to get to this point on this particular project. And we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it in that Northwest CRA. I just know it. So with that, I am now ready to give up the mic.
I'd like to make a motion, please. In consideration of planning zoning application two five, sorry, I moved ahead, two five one two zero 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 two, I move that the board finds competent and substantial evidence has been presented that satisfies the criteria three, criteria three, right?
Three.
And approves the major site plan with the, subject to the three conditions provided by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Any more comments? Seeing none, Bobby call the roll on this item.
Rich Dally?
Yes.
Karyn Worley?
Yes.
Gigi Dubek?
Yes.
Paul Fisher?
Yes.
Robert Hartzell?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes. Thank you very much. Great job, guys. Let's keep it going. Let's keep it going. Okay. Let me just ask my board, it's been two hours. Do people want a break or not?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Let's, let's, let's take a ten-minute break, okay?
Back on the record. Next item on the agenda, item number two. Are you gonna like do these together? Or do you wanna, you wanna present it together and then we separate it for voting?
Okay, I have two presentations, but I can do one right after the other and...
I think because some of, some of the folks haven't even, haven't done administrative adjustments, it might be better if you give them the whole picture. Right? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think so. Go ahead.
Okay, then yes, um, some of the, a couple of the slides are duplicate, so I'll try to...
That's fine.
Real quick.
Yeah.
And, and thank you for that. Might speed things up a little bit. Pamela Stanton with Development Services. This agenda item is for the consideration of the major administrative adjustment application for Portman Residential, also known as 2400 East, excuse me, East Atlantic Mixed Use Development. This application accompanies the major site plan for 2400 East Atlantic Project, which is a mixed-use development with 397 dwelling units and just over 10,500 square feet of commercial space along Atlantic Boulevard. Site plan is the next item on the agenda after this one, so I will be covering certain aspects of that project in this presentation. For this administrative adjustment, applicant is seeking to increase the maximum allowable building length by 20%. Project is in the TO EOD located two blocks east of the McNabb House and Botanical Garden Project that was just heard. It's on the south side of Atlant, East Atlantic Boulevard, west of Federal Highway between Southeast 24th and 25th Avenues and covers the full block. Location is the Old Wells Fargo site, bank site. Site plan shows two buildings, a large building on the north portion of the site and a smaller building on the south portion. Buildings are permitted by right to be up to 300 feet in length in the TO District. A major administrative adjustment would allow the developer to increase the building length to 360 feet, which is what the applicant is proposing. When we wrote the EOD standards, we wrote them to encourage compact urban forms of development, as was the case with the TO and the DPO before the EOD was established. The code also encourages full block development, and this project embraces those aspects of urban development. Here are the major administrative adjustment review standards. Running through the standards that are applicable to this project, the first one, I just mentioned about full block and urban development. The project is consistent with a comprehensive plan and most obviously the goal for discouraging urban sprawl by replacing the extensive, existing expansive surface parking lot with a compact vertical development with fully enclosed parking within the building. The project would impose no greater impact, greater impacts on adjacent lands than would occur if the building complied with the maximum length allowed by right. And the project will provide public benefits by contributing to affordable housing, incorporating a public open space plaza, a pedestrian cross-block passage between the two buildings to provide a connection for the newly designated publicly accessible greenway shown on the publicly accessible open space and urban greenway system diagram of the EOD. And last, the project will include public art that will be displayed in public open spaces or along the street. So with that, should the board find that the applicant, application has provided competent substantial evidence to satisfy the review standards for major administrative adjustment approval? This Development Services Department recommends approval including the following conditions, which are, there are three. One, the development order and administrative adjustment document must be recorded with Broward County. A copy of the recorded approval must be submitted at the time of building permit. Two, this condition in the staff report listed the, erroneously listed the incorrect PZ number. So for the record, I want to correct staff condition number two to read, obtain major site plan approval for PZ number 25-12-00-00-01. Three, the last condition, are the standard conditions of approval and/or specifications required prior to building permit and zoning compliance permit issuance. That concludes my brief overview of the major administrative adjustment application. I will move on to the site plan presentation. Give me a moment to... Oh. Get that prepared. There we go. So this is the agenda item for the major site plan application for the 2400 East Atlantic Mixed Use Development. We just saw this on the last presentation. It's the same location. Now, the subareas diagram of the EOD shows that this project location covers all subareas, the core, the center, and the edge, including the yellow line on Atlantic Boulevard on the site that is the 20-foot step back above the fifth floor along Atlantic Boulevard. I wanna show that 20-foot step back. I wanna show how it will look. This is the view from the north side of Atlantic Boulevard looking south, and the image shows the step back above the fifth floor where the sixth, seventh, and eighth floors are set further back from the face of the building. Again, as I showed the site plan on the previous slideshow, presentation, the project is in the TO EOD with the same number of units and square footage for commercial space. On this site plan for this presentation, I've added the subarea boundaries in red to the site plan on the slide. The larger building to the north in, is partially in all three subareas. So it will transition down from eight stories in the core to five stories in the center, and then the small portion of that building in the edge will be three stories. The west half of the, west half of the smaller building is in the core and will be eight stories and three stories on the east half of this edge subarea. And this slide talks about the building length, the administrative adjustment, which I've already covered. The applicant has conducted a traffic impact analysis for this project. The city's traffic engineering services consultant, Kimberly Horn, John McWilliams, is here this evening for questions. Kimberly Horn has reviewed the analysis and provided comments, which are in your backup, and a condition has been added requiring that the review comments from that study are addressed. The site plan lasts on this page. The site plan was reviewed in April and May of this year and was approved by the AAC last month. And I wanna focus on each of the two buildings just for a couple minutes. This one, this slide focuses, focuses on the north building, which includes the ground floor commercial space, residential units, a residential lobby, and multiple backup house facilities. These items surround a private open space courtyard. More units and backup house elements also line the internal parking garage. Again, the building transitions down from eight stories to five to three. And the uses in the building heights do comply with the zoning regulations for both buildings. Now, this is the south building, which is split into the core and edge subareas, as I said a couple minutes ago. There are eight levels of apartments in the core on the left side of the screen, and three-story walk-ups units in the edge on the right side. The required 30-foot wide pedestrian cross-block passage and an approximately 5,000-square-foot open space plaza are shown on the north side of this building, which is, the cross-block passage is between the two buildings on the overall site plan. And for those public areas, we require a public access easement to be recorded. This is the view from the southeast corner of Southeast Second Street and 25th Avenue, shows how the buildings will transition in height. In front of you at the corner is the three-story portion of the edge subarea with the eight-story portion behind it in the core subarea of the smaller building. This slide also shows how the three-story portion of the larger building transitions upward from three stories to five stories and then eight stories on Atlantic Boulevard. And this slide shows a clip of, a segment of the west elevation of the buildings, and it shows a pedestrian bridge that will connect the two buildings at the third level above the pedestrian cross-block passage. The bridge will serve residents who live in the south building and park in the garage on the north building. Now, this drawing shows the bridge to be enclosed at the third level, however, the bridge must be open air. It does also show an open air connection on the fourth level, which one of these two levels must be removed, and the one that remains will need, must be open air. And one needs to be removed because the bridge must connect one level of the building and, buildings and not two. So moving on to the major site plan review standards that are listed, as usual, the information on how these standards have been met is in your backup on the staff report, the drawings and documents that have been uploaded for you. With that, I have conditions for the major administrative, did I read the major administrative adjustment comments already?
Yeah.
I did. So these are the, the comments for the major site plan. Should the board find the application has provided competent substantial evidence to satisfy the review standards for major site plan approval, the Development Services recommends approval including the following conditions. Now, there are several rather lengthy, excuse me, conditions shown here, but they can be addressed at the time of permit without affecting the site layout. I have to read them into the record anyway? One, the ETOC land use requires affordable housing contributions, and the applicant may either set aside a minimum of 15% of the proposed units as affordable housing or contribute the in lieu of fee for each unit. Based on information provided in the application, the applicant intends to pay the in lieu of fee acknowledging the current rate of $10,609 per unit proposed. In accordance with Resolution 2022-185, the application must utilize Broward County Policy 2164 for the residential entitlements. Two, a five-foot right-of-way dedication along East Atlantic Boulevard is required for compliance with the Broward County Trafficway Plan. Trafficway's plan must be completed prior to building permit approval. Three, provide details and specifications for the required shade-producing structure on the exposed top level of parking, covering a minimum of 60% of the parking area. Show and label the structure on the roof plan. Four, provide evidence that demonstrates how the north courtyard listed as required private open space on sheet SP 100 will be sufficiently isolated from public use, or provide the minimum 10% required private open space at a different location on the site. Five, for density bonus option number one, clarify which strategy will be provided. A piece of artwork valued at 1% of the project's, excuse me, construction costs, or a maximum of $250,000, whichever is less. Or a fee to equal to 1% of the project's construction costs, or $250,000, whichever is less. If providing the artwork, it must be displayed in a public open space or areas along the street abutting the building. The art must receive a recommendation by the Public Art Committee and approval from the City Commission. Funds or an appropriate bonding instrument must be placed in escrow at the time of building permit and will be held until the art is approved after installation. Six, for density bonus option number two, provide a note on the plans that the 4,950-foot square foot plaza, South Plaza will remain open to the public as a public open space in perpetuity. Seven, for density bonus option number three, provide evidence of compliance with each of the selected sustainable development options. Provide evidence that the buildings are constructed to meet minimum 200 mile-per-hour wind loads. Show overhangs on the all south-facing windows. Provide specifications for at least 75% of hot water on premises heated via tankless water heaters. Provide specifications for all air conditions, air conditioners indicated, indicate they are Energy Star qualified. Show the locations of skylights on the plans and provide evidence that demonstrates the skylights. Provide at least 10% of the light necessary for daily use on the story in which the skylights are located. Provide specifications for the white roof paint. Provide specifications, details, and locations for the solar panels used to generate a minimum of 15% of the solar energy used by the buildings. Provide details for the permeable sidewalk surfaces. Last, a note on this condition, the solar panels can be counted towards satisfying only one option and cannot be counted towards satisfying both the efficient water heating option and the solar panels option. Eight, show the locations of suspended, the suspended pavement system on the paving, grading, and drainage plans. Nine, existing easements that are in conflict with the proposed development must be abandoned or vacated. Ten, all outstanding comments of the traffic impact study review memorandum dated August 12, 2025 must be addressed prior to building permit and zoning compliance approval. Eleven, and last, standard conditions of approval and/or specifications required prior to building permit and zoning compliance permit issuance. Thank you. That does conclude my overview of the 2400 East Atlantic Major Site Plan Application. I can answer questions you may have about the site plan. Our traffic engineering consultant, John McWilliams, is here, as I mentioned, regarding any questions about his, his comments and review. Of course, the applicant is here for a presentation and to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the overview. So we're gonna, so now we're gonna step back and concentrate on the administrative adjustment, but I wanted everybody to get the entire picture. I thought it was a good idea to get the entire picture of what the project would be, because I think you could start talking about certain parts of this administrative adjustment that would be affected significantly by the site plan. So, anyway, that was my thought on that. So does anybody wanna start with questions of staff on just the administrative adjustment portion at this point?
Mr. Chair, I've got a number of questions about the project itself that unless they are answered to satisfaction tonight, I can't, I would have a very hard time supporting the project this evening. And if we take the administrative adjustment before we have an opportunity to question the applicant on the many questions about the project itself... on the many questions about the project itself, they're asking for relief before, in my mind, I've decided whether I can support the project or not. So, take that up. Can we hear a presentation from the applicant? So I can see if I can get my questions answered, because if I can't get my questions answered to my satisfaction, I can't support the administrative adjustment. Because they're asking for relief, and I'm not willing to give them.
Okay.
I tend to agree with Mrs. Coleman here on this. And also, even more so, I would want to take the administrative adjustment after the site plan potentially, if that's possible, I don't know, but.
Nah, you can't, because you can't, the building, the penetration through the building has to be approved to be able to, because otherwise you're in variance to the code.
You're correct, I apologize. But for me, it's more so questions about the entire project again as well.
Okay. All right, we're still gonna have to vote on them separately, so.
No, that's not a problem.
Okay. Okay, so, so do you have questions of staff then at this point?
No.
Okay, well, I do have one then, if we're gonna talk about the conditions. There was a, you, Mrs. Stanton, you talked about the, the, whatever we call this, the pass-through, the walking from one side to the other. That elevation is not proper at this point? When you look at it, based on what you said, or unless I misunderstood what you said, it can't be two stories, it shows it as two stories?
That, that's not the cross, you were.
Crosswalk.
It's not, that's not the cross-block passage that.
Okay, whatever it was, you said it's supposed to be one story, and it shows it as two. I don't care what you call it, so.
Me, yeah.
The bridge.
The bridge, okay.
It's the bridge, it's a, why is it not going back? Hold on. Okay, this, I had mentioned that the, this is the bridge connecting the two buildings that is for the residents to use. I did mention that the bridge crosses over on the third level, where the pedestrian cross-block passage is for the public at the ground level. Let me see. Here.
Well, that elevation showed it, I thought. It shows it as two stories, and you said it can only be one.
That's true, the bridge can be, be only one story.
Right, so I didn't want to leave that for a second. So, are you saying that that's, what is shown in that elevation is not legal?
Uh, it is.
I'm not saying it's illegal to have a bridge. I'm saying it's illegal to have a two-story bridge, is what you said.
It would, it would render the two buildings as one.
Okay.
Because, not because of the two bridges, but because.
Okay, let me go to my point. My point is, is doesn't that have to be a 12, doesn't that have to be a 12 condition then? For them to redraw that so that it's only a one-story bridge? If this is what's presented to us.
Good point. It, it does need to be a condition.
Okay, that was all I was trying to get at. Okay, now I'm ready to go to the next thing, unless somebody else has something before.
Wasn't, wasn't part of that it has to be open as well, open air?
One, yes, one level.
One level and open, so.
So that would have to be part of that condition?
Yeah.
So that'd be additional as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Basically, correct the bridge, okay, is the condition. So, but my point was, I didn't want to leave that out, because what's shown here to us is technically not legal.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartzell, did you have a question?
I have a question for counsel.
Okay. Ah, lawyers are trying to take over, lawyers are trying to take over, you know?
Like I said earlier, this is my first major administrative adjustment decision. What's the, is it discretionary, is it, are there standards that we're supposed to?
She gave us.
How are we supposed to look at it?
She gave us the.
Yeah, they.
She gave us the three, didn't you, or there was some standards?
You do have review standards, which you have to follow.
Is there someone in the microphone?
If you're looking at your, the staff report, on page one, it's A through D, but D has multi-parts. You see that?
Pulling it up.
On page two of the staff report?
Well, it begins on page one. It says achieves the intent of the subject standard to the same or higher degree than the subject standard. You see that?
You have, you don't have a copy of that.
I have a copy, you can have my copy.
Okay, it's page, it's the bottom of page, it says, bottom of page one of three, and the top of page, well, actually, it's the whole second page.
Yes.
I do, but I got notes on them. Did you guys cheat when you went to school or something? You're giving, I made my own list, you know?
Does this look different?
Wow, you're getting it from the, you know, from the legal council list. You guys have your own rules, you just give people stuff. It's unbelievable, they just do whatever they want, they're lawyers.
We play nice.
Okay. Did somebody else want, are you?
That was it.
Oh, you just wanted to see it? Oh, okay, so does somebody else want to speak, or are we gonna move on? No?
I just have a quick question here for the traffic engineer. Should, we're gonna talk traffic now potentially, or do you want to save this for after the presentation? After, or now?
Are, is, are they gonna do a presentation? Okay, so I think.
Hold.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anybody else before we? No. So, so we're gonna go to, now, who's gonna, somebody's gonna present? From the applicant, or?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Amodio. I'm Keith. I'll be presenting the Portman-Mix Use Project. I have been sworn in already.
Okay.
Ms. Barto, keep your port closer into the microphone, please.
Sorry about that, can you hear me better now? Can you hear me better now?
That's better.
Okay, just gotta speak up a little bit. All right, my address is 301 East Atlantic Boulevard, Pompano Beach. I do want to start with the staff conditions in, in all of the reports presented from staff, the major administrative adjustment, major site plan approval, or major site plan application, and the traffic memo. The applicant has no issues with the conditions that are presented and has already begun to address most of those in preparation to resubmit to, to the city. And a lot of the, the conditions are anticipated on being addressed at time of building permitting. So I just wanted to.
Plus the new condition?
Yes, correct, plus the new condition. And we have no issue with the new condition.
Okay, got it, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, so our project's located at 2,400 East Atlantic Boulevard. A little bit about our client, Portman. They have been developing projects for many, many years and have developed projects all across the country. And this specific project isn't just about another statistic. It's about creating a infill mixed-use development that will benefit the city in terms of providing a pedestrian-oriented use and active use along the Atlantic Boulevard corridor. So you have an opportunity here to redevelop an otherwise underutilized site and developing a new infill mixed-use development. The project is located along the East Atlantic Boulevard corridor. It is between Federal Highway and the Intercoastal. The existing site is the former Wells Fargo Bank. All adjacent parcels are zoned TO/EOD, except for the portion on the southeast corner of the property, which is RS2. The existing building and surface parking lot will be demolished to make way for the new development that we're proposing. The project site is unique in that it covers three sub areas within the TO/EOD, the core, center, and edge. This project is anticipated on supporting the goals of the Transformation Plan and also the East Overlay District in that it is providing pedestrian active frontage to support, to support the East Atlantic Boulevard corridor, which is a gateway in connecting the downtown, Pompano Beach downtown with beaches. So this will be a destination point, not only for residential residents, but also for a commercial component where people can go and eat and drink and enjoy the commercial components at the East Atlantic Boulevard street level. Smart-Growth principles also are supported by this development in that we're providing wide sidewalks, active commercial use, compact development, structured parking, and wide sidewalks for multi-pedestrian and bicycle use. This project is a full-block development. In the front is the commercial component at the ground level with residential stories above. Throughout the development, there are ground-floor residential units that have direct access to the street and also up to eight stories above. The project also has a six-story parking garage with pool level on the sixth floor, as well as courtyard amenity spaces on the north and south sides. There's a zoomed-in view of the northern portion of the site. This features the commercial component along East Atlantic Boulevard. We have landscape, street trees that are separating the vehicle traffic flow of East Atlantic Boulevard with our sidewalk and pedestrian bicycle use path. The project also is featuring a covered arcade walk, which is flanked by the outdoor seating on, on the corners of the building. The project also has a paseo that will connect the East Atlantic Boulevard street frontage to a private amenity courtyard within the building, which will be open to the sky. Next, I'll be discussing the overall site plan. This is our rendered site plan, in which I'll be walking you around the site, starting with southeast 24th Avenue. So moving south from the commercial corner, we have the main residential lobby with designated vehicle drop-off, passenger drop-off in front. At the west, a garage access will be a full, full development, full access opening. And also seven walk-up units. These units have ground-floor access directly to the sidewalk. Above those units will be the eight-story component for the residential. Southeast 24th Avenue also have on-street parking, street trees, and perimeter landscape. As you round the corner to southeast Second Street, you have the private lobby access, which is in the central location of the building, with another seven walk-up units that have ground-floor access to the street as well as eight stories of residential above. As you move toward the east side of Second Street, we have about four units along Second Street that are three stories in height, which are the walk-up units and have direct access to the street as well. When you round the corner to southeast 25th Avenue, we also have another seven walk-up units with ground-floor access. A portion of that street has additional three-story dedicated units with ground-floor access to the street. We also have the east garage access as well, the secondary one, which is also full access. There's a close-up view of the mid-block pedestrian passage. This will be publicly accessible and connects 24th Ave. and 25th Ave. street grids by providing publicly designated passage through the entire block and connecting the sidewalk network. It also will have a south plaza, which will also be publicly designated and offer resting areas and landscape for passive recreation use. This plaza also has access from the residential units that front it on the backside of the southern. Here is the Atlantic Boulevard rendering of the project, which I think you saw in staff's proposal, or staff report. And as you can see here, we have the ground-floor activated commercial use with the outdoor seating, with our wide sidewalks, separated landscape areas from vehicle traffic and pedestrian enrollment. Staff also mentioned the step-back, which occurs at the fifth level. It goes up to eight stories from there. Next, southeast 24th Ave., we have our eight-story residential component all along this frontage. You can see that there are ground-floor unit accesses there activating the street. We have street trees and perimeter landscape, as well as on-street parking spaces along this corridor. Here's a peek into the pedestrian passage from southeast 24th Ave. You can see that there's seating areas built into the landscape and hardscape design there. We have the residential units on the background there that have direct access to that plaza. Here, rounding the corner to southeast Second Street, we have the eight-four, eight-story residential component, as well as the three-story residential component. Ground-floor access from those ground-floor units directly to the street, street trees, and perimeter landscape. On the other corner, this is looking from the RS2 side, but we have our three-story walk-up units here rounding this corner. And then the building steps up in height from there as you move toward Atlantic Boulevard. I also want to touch on the major administrative adjustment. This project is unique in that it's a full-block development. The three sub areas within the EO D each have their own requirements. And fitting the necessary building components into a full-block design presented the need to extend the maximum building length from 300 max feet to a proposed 360 max feet, 20% increase. That concludes my presentation. I have the development team here, if there are any questions.
Okay. Did you want to start now, or?
I think that, no, 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 I always start, you start.
That's fine.
Okay.
The density bonus, if I'm not mistaken, you're applying for the density bonus.
Correct, yes.
The location of the open space in the southern section of the property, it feels to me, and I'm just gonna, it feels to me like it's, it's hidden away to a point where it's not really designed for public use. It's tucked in the back, it's near entrances, it's not near any commercial space. It is, sure, it provides hardscape for seating, but it doesn't feel as though it's truly what is intended use of the open space usage for density bonuses. So that's number one, and I just wanted to share that thought process out, if you want to respond to that.
Sure, thank you for your comment. Sure, thank you for your comment. And I think originally, we had the north courtyard as our location of the public open space. However, we had to redesign it and move it to the south side because of its location in, within the courtyard of the building.
But again, there's really no draw for the public to come to that area. You know, from an open space perspective, like what is there to, what is there to draw the public to that area?
Has passive active use for seating and resting, so people that are walking around the neighborhood and crossing by can go there to relax or read a book.
Sure, if that's what you would consider like a good usage of the public space in that area to obtain a density bonus. Two, parking on the site, like I just feel like it's underparked, and I just, I don't think that there is enough, for the density bonuses that you're requesting and for the size of the project, while it may meet the necessary code per se, but it is underutilizing, and then we're adding in, just recently we approved a wonderful botanical garden that's going to draw a lot of people to the community, and it's very, it's neighboring to this property, and I'm sure that that's going to affect the parking situation in the area. So I'm just concerned about the amount of parking that's allotted to this, especially with density bonuses requested again.
George O'Brien with MSA Architects, 8950 Southwest 74th Court, Miami, Florida. So to answer your question, if I may, go back to the passage. I do think it's a good location, yes, you know, if it was right smack down the middle, probably the ideal, but I think because of the way the building is laid out and the different height requirements that we have, I think it actually works well there, because if you notice, you have the maximum three-foot criteria. So the passageway and the courtyard that goes along with it actually feels a lot more open than if you were to have it sort of in the middle, surrounded by eight-story buildings. So that's one thing to consider. There's probably no perfect spot for it, but if you move it also a little bit further north to the, to the east, you really have the back of House of Flanagan's. So it doesn't really serve great purpose there either. Where we are right now, to the east, you have, I believe, some single-family homes, and then to the west, now you're going to have the park. So I would imagine maybe it serves as a connector to the project that we just heard earlier today. So, and I don't think it's placed incorrectly. I, I, actually, one of my comments early on was that it kind of looks nice because of the massing of the building stepping down, and you see it in the rendering. So those are, those are my thoughts on that. In terms of the parking, we are exceeding the required parking. I hear you on the, you know, on the possibility of needing more parking. We do have, you know, parallel parking around the entire site except for Atlantic. And, you know, historically, I think the numbers that we're providing should work with the, with the density and the unit mix that we have. And also, we're limited by the height, again. There's really no, no other way to fit additional parking, which I would also like to go back to the, to the building length situation, because right now, the way that the building is laid out, there's sort of no other way to lay it out where it works to get the units and the parking to work, because we're limited to the height. If we lower the building down more south, then there's no way we can get parking, because then we have to lower the majority of the building, of the parking to four stories. If we go more north, then you lose the courtyard that we have in the front, and it also impacts the retail. So that's really what's driving the 360 feet, the 20% request on the building length. Just wanted to explain that.
I can appreciate your responses. I don't think that it's sufficient, though, in my opinion. I'll let Ms. Coleman go.
Kind of agree with that, because your explanations, I'm not sure we ever envisioned someone using all four density bonuses, and your constraints are because you're trying to shoehorn so many units in here, and that the site is constraining that. I don't think that the public open space is legitimate public open space to get that density bonus. It needs to be accessible to the public, and if I'm the public, I'm not going to walk through what is clearly a private development to get to the other side. I'm going to go around the block, because it doesn't look like open space to me. It's not what we consider open space. I understand my colleagues' concerns about the parking, but I'll tell you what we told the last person who did a major development on a corridor. It's a chicken and an egg. We don't want too much parking, because we want you to use public transportation, but it's how you market these units. You have to say, if you have multiple cars in your household, perhaps this is not the place for you. And we required for that development assigned parking. And because we did not want the neighborhood intrusion that comes with too many cars for each unit. I am troubled by the number of conditions and the lack of response to much of the transportation That doesn't mean that I necessarily oppose the project. It means that I have concerns that haven't been answered yet, and feel that perhaps you're here a little prematurely, that until you can respond to all of the comments in the traffic study, and some of the comments that are not tied to the time of pulling the building permit, that perhaps we should take a look at some of those before you seek approval, because this is kind of a wing and a prayer, at this point, I think, for some of this stuff. Doesn't mean I oppose your project. It means that I just have a bunch of questions that you haven't answered on the record yet.
Sure. If I may, a lot of the comments, a lot of the, sorry, the conditions are very typical of a project this size and this complex. We've obviously reviewed the, the conditions, and, you know, we, we don't see how we wouldn't be able to meet any of them. There's, there's no condition that we're having trouble or would have trouble meeting. So, you know, that's the reason for us being here, and, you know, we feel comfortable that we will meet those conditions, and, you know, if not, there's really no way to move forward, especially with the conditions about density.
Sir, I've sat on this board for 10 years, seen projects a lot more complex than this come to us with a lot less comments that are unanswered. So I respect your answer. Thank you for your answer. I know you're representing your client.
I understand.
But I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, that's an appropriate response to get me to change my mind on it.
Understood.
Why don't I go ahead and jump in and make some comments about the plaza? Unless, unless the plaza, which is not what the intention of, the intention is to break the building up, and I was, since, you know, obviously, I've been around since dirt, the, I was here when we put those, that 300-foot condition into the EOC, okay? And to be honest with you, it wasn't about hardly, I would say virtually, any project except Atlantic Square. And that's because we were looking at the potential for 1,300 feet of continuous building. So we tried to figure out how you would divide that up. I hate to say it, but I didn't actually realize that on side streets, we would have that same condition. I actually thought it only applied to Atlantic Boulevard, and obviously, I was wrong. But I think that if you look at the location where it comes out on the east, and there was some discussion about the new project over, you know, the new project that we just looked at at McNabb House, the reason that that corner sits down three stories is because somebody caught what I consider a mistake, that said it was going to be five stories on that particular drawing, okay? And then realized, we realized that it aligned with First Court, which would be the southwest corner of Atlantic Square, because all the property that Atlantic Square, yes, they own everything from 28th Avenue to 24th Avenue, but they also own all the stuff behind Flanagan's, they own the first six lots, and they're trying to acquire them all. So the very corner of Southeast First Court is going to be the southeast corner, southwest corner of their project, and this cross-through is not very far from that. It's actually diagonally, it's going to jump you across the street. God willing, someday, Atlantic Square actually redevelops their property. So even though today, it may not look like it's, you know, eminently in, in a space that's really, you know, like today, that's a bunch of single-family homes all in the south, on the northwest corner of that, or excuse me, it would be the southeast corner of that intersection. That's the whole reason the building even drops down three stories, because at one time, it said five, and I was like panicked, no, it needs to be three. When you get to these single-family homes, which was the whole idea of the stepping, the 85, 80, excuse me, 85, 55, excuse me, 80, 55, 35. So that was the, that was actually the whole concept of it, and, and I actually think the pass-through is not going to be that bad, and it would probably, would it be better? Maybe if, but it wouldn't create the pass-through, okay? But it, only on a perimeter would it be better, in my opinion. Like if, if you put it on the south thing, and you stepped it back, and you had it where it was blatantly out in the public space, but then you wouldn't solve the problem of the length of the building, and you also wouldn't really solve, you'd be farther from the next mixed-use project if you, you know, down the road, if that mixed-use project does come in, and, and they actually develop that into the project. So I don't have as much problem. I do, I do tend to agree with you, Mrs. Coleman, about how many, how many conditions there are, and so I actually think we might want to go through even more of them. We might want to go through, I had like seven of them that I actually wanted to go through. Now, you've already gone through a few of them.
I'm willing to share here.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, but anyway, I, I didn't want to let it go that, you know, because that was my opinion about that, and I saw it very plainly, and I was completely, you know, untethered, I was not at all worried about the 360 versus the 300 feet, because if you think about it mathematically, there's going to be one cut-through, that building, period, right? It's 525 feet, so if you divide that to 300, it's going to have one cut-through, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not as concerned about the cut-through. I mean, I understand the need for that. I'm just, I guess I'm a little irked that it's being used as public space, when I don't think it's really public space, and they get a density bonus for it. That's my issue with that. But I, I'm pretty serious about the, the parking requirements, putting the same kind of requirements on this project that we put on the one that came to us a couple of months ago.
I believe that was Atlantic One, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And what was the, when you say assigned, it was one assigned space per front door?
Yeah, so that folks coming in the door understand that that's the limitation on parking.
That question, because these are the developers, so they need to tell us, how do you, is that something you do when you're leasing, or how does that work?
I'm Mark Bramble with Portman. My address is 303 Peachtree Center, Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you for your time today. So, yeah, I appreciate a lot of the comments, and if I may, just take a, take a whack at some of these. I agree that there are a lot of conditions, and frankly, I don't know why, because we've tried to address most of these. I don't think there's any comment or condition that we haven't been willing to address. We have a detail for the rooftop shade structure, it's very similar to Mela across the street in Moraya. We're going to take the one-story bridge. I mean, a lot of this is sort of boilerplate, so if you'd like, we can go condition by condition, but all of this is basically just...
That, that's probably not a bad idea, because I think that's where the, you understand that, and, and three years ago, or four years ago, there was a point in time at which we, it seemed like we would creep up, and we went from six, and then we had seven, and then we finally, this board finally said, come to us with four or something, don't, don't keep doing this. It's not your, it's not your fault, that's just what this board kind of set as a policy. So we're trying to scrunch them down.
Where is that slide? Can we zip back to the...
Sure. And, and I think it's probably, well, maybe I'm wrong, but I think for me, it's the most important thing, because if, if you've actually taken care of these things, then it, there's a different feeling from, at least from me, and I think probably Mrs. Coleman, based on what she's saying.
Well, that and the, and the traffic study, I'd like to go through.
Well, I think you and I have, we're in the same place on that, too. So, so I think John's going to get his chance at it, too, so, whatever, because I'm going to have questions for that.
Mr. Chairman, is every, is there any public out there, or is this all the development team?
I, I don't think, is there any? It is?
Okay, I think we're having some technical issues, but if I could just read through these real quickly. So condition one is the ETAC land use, you know, affordable housing condition? I mean, that's, that's boilerplate, right? We're going to do it. The five-foot dedication for the right-of-way is boilerplate, we're going to do it.
Obviously have to do that, okay.
Did you say you're going to do the affordable housing, or you're going to pay?
We're going to pay in lieu, but we're going to address it.
Just want to make sure. There was confusion on the first presentation from the staff, saying you were going to do it or not.
I'm just trying to address the comment about there's so many conditions.
Yes, go ahead.
So the, we're going to provide details and specifications for the required shade structure, that's a building permit kind of issue. I mean, we don't have, you know, we can, we could, we, we have a detail that we provided. It's going to be a, you know, a shade structure, so that, that's not an objectionable issue. We've...
Before we, we may interrupt you as you go along, okay, but go ahead. Does anybody have any question on that shade structure? Okay, keep going.
We have a detail for the shade structure on the plans.
You're, you're good.
We've discussed an Architectural Appearance Committee, NDRC, regarding the north courtyard that, you know, we could, we could put a fence up and create privacy, so that it's not considered private open space. There's a little bit of a debate as to whether which, which courtyard was preferable for the purposes of, of public open space, and we were kind of neutral, we kind of thought that the north courtyard would have been more activated, because that's where the retail is. I think staff and police had a concern about that.
Coming off of Atlantic Boulevard.
Yeah, so, but, but, you know, we can do that. We're going to do the public art, you know, so again, as a condition, we have no objection here, that's just sort of for the record.
You're planning on doing the piece of art?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Where's it going to go?
Well, I would like to kind of take a whack at trying to share with you my vision for the South Park, but maybe we'll defer that for a second. But my view was that it was going to be in the South Park, and I have a sort of a vision for what that's going to look like and why we chose that issue, but I know that's a separate issue, but let's just stay on the conditions, I guess, for a second. So that, you know, so that relates to comment number six. Then comment number seven, again, is this is sort of a, you go to submit your building permits, they want to show Energy Star appliances, et cetera. I mean, I don't know how we would address that now, but we intend to do that, right? Same for the suspended pavement, that's a building permit issue. Once we go to show you tree plans, that's where the, you know, we're going to show you where that goes. The traffic impact study, we just received yesterday. We've been working on this with, you know, AAC and DRC for months and months. I think most of the comments in the traffic study are notes and labels, there's nothing in there, so that's objectionable, so we intend to comply with it, but we literally just saw that yesterday. Existing easements, you know, we're going to abandon that once we close, that's Georgia Power, there's a power line there, you know, that kind of stuff, we're going to remove. So, I mean, it does look like a lot, but most of this is just, you know, I, I don't feel like it's a half-baked proposal, most of it is just sort of stuff that we're going to work through.
Personally, I think eight and 10 are two things I want to talk about. Do you want, you have something you want to jump on?
I understand that you don't think that they're big things, but from our perspective, we usually see them on the plans, and they're addressed before they come to us in many of the cases. So that it's not required that you have a comment or a condition, and I think that's where the concern has been. Yes, you say you're going to do them, but we're used to seeing them done before we have to render a, a decision.
Understood. I mean, the shade structure is in the plan set. Again, you know, a lot of the stuff requiring the, uh, I don't know, I mean, the affordable housing, I mean, the art, I mean, I, you know, I just, it's, uh...
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think one, two, I mean, one, two are just, they have to be on there. We understand that.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, if the detail, if, if number three is actually detailed, then I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not sure we really care, we should care about that necessarily. As long as it covers the legal area, there's not, I don't, you know, because Mike's group is gonna make him do whatever implies with the code.
May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Tu Ha Wen. I am with Via Planning, which is a traffic engineering firm, and, um, I'm sure you may be aware that traffic engineering is a really small industry. So John and I actually have been working together in the same small little group for twenty-five years now, and I would promise you that, um, he would not let us get away with anything, at all, ever, ever. Um, whether we sit on the same side of the table, or across the table, which is often the case, like similar to this particular project. And, um, your staff and the consultant team has been incredibly thoughtful with us, um, in developing a methodology, which actually really helped us develop the first draft of the, of the report. And we follow the exact methodology that was approved by the city. Um, so it's my fault, I apologize. I really, truly thought that first cut, there's no problem here, there isn't anything to see. However, knowing John, he didn't let us get away with anything. He found a misspelled, he found one arrow that was missing, he found an appendix that we should have included that we didn't, and we're including all of them. And he asked us to take a step further. There was an improvement, that we said, "Hey, we, we actually did need to make that improvement, that hey, if you want to, you can, talk to Broward County Traffic Engineering." And he said, "Nope, you do it, you tell me what works." So we did it, and unfortunately, because of the timing, we submitted our complete report yesterday, and, um, it's quite big, so I, I don't expect that, um, John had a chance to review that at all. But I promise you for the record, and in front of all of you guys, and John as well, he would not let us get away with anything. So I promise you, any outstanding traffic comment, we will address. And it's, it's, to me, it's a readdress, as of yesterday, but, um, John will be able to confirm that with you.
Um, do you want to go through some of those things with John?
Yes. Um, the, one of the things I wanted to talk about was...
Good afternoon, John McWilliams with Kimley-Horn and Associates Offices in Plantation, Florida. Morning.
Good to see you.
Afternoon.
Good to see you.
Evening.
Good evening.
We'll see.
Yeah. Um, on the analysis, John, uh, number six, your comment number six, you talk about the, um, Q is expected to exceed the storage provided on, um, uh, the intersection of U S One at Atlantic. Is that something that you're adding to most of the traffic studies, or everything along Atlantic now?
Yeah, and I wanna, I wanna defend Tu Ha a little bit here. You know, a lot of my comments are dot your i's, cross your t's, we want a complete report for the record. If something, for instance, if the report is showing there was deficiency, like a turn lane, Q extending beyond the turn lane, can it be lengthened? First of all, is it caused by the project, or is it an existing condition?
Right.
If the project is creating an increase, okay, can you mitigate that increase? So I'm simply asking, and I, I don't know, I haven't looked at this turn lane to see whether it could be increased at all, whether there's any room in the median to increase it. I just want to make sure that the report takes it all the way to ground, right? Okay, we, if we have a deficiency, and we address it, and if we can't, fine, let's just state that in the report. If we can, then I will leave it up to staff to whether they would want to increase the turn lane length and trade off green area in the median. But I'd want to at least have all those facts out there. So that's, that's the, kind of the, that, that comment. That is not gonna fundamentally change their project.
No, but that was, that was kind of an aside issue, because
Sure.
Traffic on Atlantic is becoming more, more of an issue. We need to make sure that we're taking that into consideration on things. I guess I, as I went through the traffic report, my, um, and I understand the timing has been skewed here, and you didn't get it until tomorrow. I mean, to a yesterday.
It's really compressed. I, I, to be honest, I got it probably a little late to, to review it. I reviewed it in six days over the weekend, and so then the comments finally got to Tu Ha, and she addressed them just as quick as I reviewed them, so I suspect we'll have this all resolved in a week.
Well, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, or...
Fifteen and sixteen.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Fourteen was the only one.
Yeah, fourteen was the only one on that page
Mm-hmm.
that was addressed. Everything else was outstanding.
Those are site plan comments, and those, to be honest with you, those have been around for, for quite a while, because a lot of those comments were made back in March.
Okay, but they still have not been addressed.
Correct.
Um, and, and usually, that's a red flag for us, so, um...
Again, I will say, just to be fair, a lot of my comments are not gonna fundamentally change the site plan. It's a tweak of a sidewalk width here, it's a stop sign that should be here, it's some marking. So I do want those addressed, but, but I will say that what I think you guys are reviewing is fundamentally the same as if, as if they had, would have addressed this, right? Unless, depending on how detailed your review is, if you're looking at the stop bars and the, and the stop signs.
Sometimes.
Understood.
Sometimes. Um, well, okay, you are telling us, as our traffic consultant, that you feel comfortable that they have or will have met all of these, uh, comments of yours.
Yeah, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have given Pamela the agreement, like, make it a condition of approval if I thought there was something that was insurmountable, or that I felt like would fundamentally change the site plan.
Thank you.
So I think we make staff, make sure that staff enforces if...
That is one of the conditions, but I still want to, to...
Yeah, I understand. I, that, that was, I did exactly the last page, I was like, whoa, wait a minute.
Yeah.
That's what I also said, so...
On the conditions, though, um, Bridge is twelve, uh, I, I'd like to, to make a thirteen, Mr. Chair, that talks about, um, um, parking, uh, the same parking requirement we put on Atlantic One to put on here.
Okay, so we need...
Staff can remember the wording of that.
Yeah, and so, and that's something they're gonna have to agree to or, or not, one or the other, so, um... What is the, I think what we did in the other one was we made, we made one space per unit, was it? Or...
We made, yeah, we, we asked for assigned spaces.
For, I mean, in each...
In one space per unit.
Yeah, so in your leases, do you, do you assign it, or is everything general?
Ideally, we would have the ability to assign it if somebody wanted to, for example, pay to be closer to the elevator, but otherwise, it's generally first come, first served. And I think it actually helps from a parking perspective, because on a Sunday night, when, you know, pick a percentage, ten percent of the people are out with their, you know, staying with their significant other, or, you know, in a different place, or they're traveling, you want to be able to cross-park those spaces. You kind of oversell it a little bit, like you would an airline. So if you're trying to make us have one per unit, you're gonna have a lot that aren't used, and you're probably going in the wrong direction, I would say. I think typically, when we walk these on a Tuesday night at two AM, there's like ninety percent of these that are, uh, sorry, fif- ten to fifteen percent that are not utilized. We're actually parked at one point three per unit, which is actually probably high for us.
Well, I think that if you have one point three, then what we're saying is, is one point oh is assigned, and the point three can go anywhere it wants.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying, if somebody for, I mean, it's unlikely, but if somebody doesn't have a car, and we typically try to oversell that space, but...
I understand what you're saying. The result in other parts of the city have been without assigned parking. And if you've got a way to deal with this other than this, you know, um, have been neighborhood intrusion. Huge issues of neighborhood intrusion, because you've got three bedroom units, you've got three cars.
I do, I, I will say, could address that for sure. I mean, most of these three-bedroom units, frankly, we don't have very many. Our, our unit mix is a little bit in flux. These townhouses are probably gonna be, you know...
Three units, two units, you know, you've got, there, this is a T O D area. You have, what we're trying to get the developers that are coming here to do is understand that they've got to market their units a little bit differently in a T O D, if it's ever gonna be a T O D. A true T O D. And that is, isn't having a lot of multiple cars per unit. You cannot say, you can't live here if you have two cars, but you can tell them upfront, "We have built to standards that don't allow two cars per, per unit." And, and I'm not trying to get into your business model, but you gotta work with us here. How are we gonna solve this issue?
Yeah, I hear you. I'm sort of processing this for the first time. I don't think we're far apart, I think it's just nomenclature. I'm, I'm, I think I'm saying that if, if we had somebody that showed up that did not have a car, which we would, you know, we would like to incentivize them, so we're typically charging for parking, for example. So if you rent an apartment with us, you're gonna pay a hundred and fifty bucks a month for a parking space, right?
Okay.
If you don't have a car, you're gonna save yourself, you know, whatever, seven hundred bucks a month.
Okay.
So, so that unit that you're saying would have to be assigned, I'm saying, I want to take that and put it into the pool, so we incentivize people to not have cars.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's an argument that we haven't heard before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because, so what you're telling me is, anyone who parks in your building has to pay for parking?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you just solved the issue.
Yeah, we're happy to have a condition that says we charge for parking. That's, because to your point, we want to...
I don't think I'm gonna get into your business model that much, but if that's what you're telling me you're gonna do, that's a whole lot different than some of the developers we've had.
If you don't do that, then you have the problem you, um, outlined, which is you're gonna have three cars sitting there, you're gonna have your fancy, you know, we-can-only car, I mean, that's not, we can't afford to build that much parking, frankly, so I think we're aligned.
Okay.
I...
No condition on parking from me. I'm, I'm not gonna make one.
I just don't want to, I'd like to see it as a condition, because I don't want to see the model that they're going with change halfway through, and then we're back to square one, where there's an issue with parking in the community again.
Well, okay, so I think the next question is, how, how would you do that based on the way they do that? I mean, what would be the condition?
Wouldn't want to put a dollar value, but I think if you're asking us to, to put a condition that we will charge for parking, I think we're fine with that. If that works for you guys.
Yeah, if, if they, or something along the lines of like, if they do, if they do not charge for parking, then they have to assign spots, it's, it's like, kind of conditioning around the...
I don't think he's gonna care if you put an or on it. He, he, it sounds like to me, they're gonna charge for parking, just the model that they have, and the whatever number of units they have, which is significant, and we can give you an or. You know, or, I mean, whatever, I'm not gonna say you're not, but it's possible you sell it to somebody, and they do it with a different model, but we gotta make sure that, that we're covered, that's all.
No, that's fair, I mean, our, we might, yes, I think it's...
Obviously, if we put an or, it doesn't affect you, because you're gonna do it the way you want to do it, out of those two ways, and if you ever sold it to somebody who did it the other way, that's, we just want to make sure that we're not stuck later on with fifty parkings, you know, people parking all over.
We, we would...
We've had that problem before, it's a legitimate problem from, for us.
Understood.
Okay.
I'm trying to think through the charging for parking, and it seems like, yeah, I couldn't, if it's a hundred and fifty dollars, I go like, wow, I'm just gonna rent one of his apartments, all parallel park somewhere else in the city, right?
Well...
So does that, I mean, is it encourage people to use their parking spaces? You know, I can see where, when it's assigned, but if it's a hundred and fifty dollars more, I'm going, hey, I'm gonna go parking, uh, on street parking.
Well, typically, okay, but, but I, I...
This is more and more, though.
I think the, I think what he said, though, is, is that when you lease it, you, you, you say to the people, "Okay, it's gonna cost you this much for your parking space." And then if they did not, if they say, "Well, we don't have a car," I mean, I'm not sure exactly how you police that, I think that's your point, but, but, that being the case, I mean...
Yeah, typically, we would see the parking spaces along Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Fifth be, you know, you would have to pay, right? You know, whether it's Park Mobile, or whatever the app you use, so, so that would be a deterrent from residents parking there. And then sometimes, if you're in a residential street, you'll have signs that say resident parking only. So, yeah, I mean, we're not trying to push people out, we're not trying to disincentivize people from parking in the neighborhood, but it would have, that's probably more of a municipal parking management issue, I guess. But that's, that's a fair question.
I think our problem was like over at the post office on that other project or something, and Emma Lou Olson, right? But, but I don't think you're gonna have the same problem here. I mean, I, I think you're gonna get policed by...
Will they park necessarily at the botanical gardens? Like, is that a situation where maybe they're, you know, using spots that are aligned for, because it's close by, and we're gonna put a hundred and sixty-six spots there?
I was gonna make that comment, too.
Thank you.
It just opened that, you know, Mr. Tran talked about all the different parking spots that they're gonna have, so how they might spill over to that, to those parking spots.
Well, I think most, yeah, whatever, they're far...
That's gonna enforcement issue on the city's part.
Yeah, and, and most of those parking spaces are on the west side of that park, so they're pretty far, you'd...
If you make someone pay, they're gonna say...
They're gonna, you think they're gonna walk four blocks every day in the summer?
I think, I think for what it's worth, Maile is currently charging...
I think I'd be looking, I'd be dropping my hundred and fifty at the front car, personally, but...
How much did you say?
But that's just Fred, okay?
Well, I think you said seven, was it seven fifty or one fifty?
Oh, seven, oh, sorry, I said seven fifty a year, but one fifty...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Whatever.
Seven fifty a year, so that's only sixty, six dollars, six...
Sorry, I, I can't do math in my head, what would that be? No, you're...
Okay, well, that, that was confused. I, I thought you said one fifty.
I thought you said one fifty a month, and that's why...
I did, I did, I'm sorry, I was...
Okay. All right, we're confused.
Okay, well...
And if I may, I just wanted to sort of talk about our vision for this, for this park, because I hear you, we, we've sort of moved this around several times, and I understand that, you know, on face value, it might seem like we're just trying to sneak this by, but our thought process was, you know, if you're walking around with a cup of coffee in an urban environment, a lot of times, if you're on Atlantic Avenue, it's the busy commercial atmosphere, but if you're ever in a nice, you know, if you're in Georgetown, or, you know, Greenwich Village, and you come off the main street, right, and you're walking through these residential neighborhoods with the stoops and stuff, with your coffee, walking your dog, it's a, it's a different atmosphere, but it's still pleasant, you know? And a lot of times, with the sun on the east, the sun on the west, if you were to put this park on the corner of the building, and it's just sitting there in the full sun, and it's just sort of sitting there by the sidewalk, our view was that it wasn't gonna be as, as interesting. So we were actually trying to create something really shady. You know, I hate to, I know this isn't Manhattan, but think about like some of those little pocket parks in New York where you could kinda, you know, picture the public garden here, a big tree, big canopy, you know, pavers. It's a thirty-foot opening between one side of the building and the other, so I don't know what that is. But it's a it's a big opening and-
Sure.
You know, I could actually pick, you know, if it were me, and again, we've gone back and forth on this, but rather than sitting there on the on the corner of Twenty-Fourth and Second in the sun, would you rather sit there or would you rather walk your dog in here and kinda chill under this tree? I don't know. That was the thought process. If you'd rather us sort of move it around, we're happy to sort of make that a condition. But, you know, that was sort of our vision for it.
See, I kinda, I know, I'm probably the contrarian, but I kinda like it because you actually have that. You have your pu, your your private one, and then you lopped your corners off. And and we've we've get the plaza, which we, God, we were so excited when we got our plaza over at Maya because we were finally like, we had had that part of our vision as part of the overlay district. So you you having your lopped-off corners makes me pretty happy about that, too, so.
And we're excited about this connection from the garage into the into the Paseo.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
So on the plazas, a couple of questions. So the north plaza, that's our courtyard, let's talk about that first. So you're gonna gate that off or fence that off?
It's a condition.
Think that was probably, what, a Septet condition or something, or?
So if you're, if you park in the garage and you walk across that courtyard, the idea is that you'd see some outdoor seating from the restaurants and some white lights, and it would be sort of activated, right? So part of that would be open to the public, and then part of that would be fenced so that's private for the residents. And we're excited about that atmosphere, that that sort of active activation. And again, we thought about making that the public park, and I think there were some security concerns, which is why we moved it playing south, but that was a, that was a thought, is we just put a fence at some-
So, I'm sorry, so where is the fence going on this?
I see the-
I I didn't quite understand.
Outdoor seating, and so would they go through the commercial building to get to the outdoor seating? Or are they going around?
You would walk from the garage through the green space, through the Paseo to the retail. And as you're walking through the courtyard, there would be a fence on your right-hand side. So most of that would be fenced. Or you can zoom in, how about that? Oh, that's so much better, thank you.
Oh, wow. Even my old eyes can see that. That's cool.
Maybe where it says court is where the fence would be.
So it actually does come partway down there anyway, but that's really more of a-
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, and that's a division of his commercial, so I think that I can see that.
Makes more clarity.
May I ask a-
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um-
I'm sorry, were you done, Mr. Fisher?
Not yet, but-
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So going with the south plaza, is that, are you policing that per se? Are you gonna have a security guard there? Because, I mean, so my office is by the botanical garden, and I've seen the unhoused, I think is the best way to explain it. Uh, they find the smallest pockets, the darkest pockets, the off-the-road pockets. And if they find that and it's not policed properly, they will be on that park bench, on that, in that corridor.
I think we agree. It would it would be monitored and and secured, not with police probably, but onsite management, for sure.
Wanna make sure, yeah. I just wanna make sure you would be policing that. Obviously, it's part, your private property. However, I wanna make sure someone's gonna be walking through there, going through and-
Yes, sir.
Saying it's not your place where you need to be living. Okay, thank you.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mrs. Colme, you go.
Um, can you talk to me about, talk to us about your vision for the commercial? Because that's been a challenge in some other mixed-use projects, and you've got some very large commercial spaces here.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. I know you guys don't know much about Portman because we're from Atlanta, but we really like mixed-use. We really like retail. I don't know if you're familiar with the Avalon project and and Alpharetta or the Battery, but our our team, we didn't build those, but our team did the lease up there. Um, so we really like that, and, you know, we like local, chef-driven, activated. So we've worked with George's team and even a retail consultant to make sure that we've got the access from the parking garage to the retail appropriately, you know, the trash from the garage through the restaurants appropriately, service and everything, you know, the depth of the retail is appropriate, the the outdoor seating is appropriate. This is not one of those like twenty-foot liners in the garage, the ceiling heights, you know? So I do think we've put a lot of time into making sure those are viable. And our vision for it is mostly F and B, kinda playing the off, you know, founders and, is it founders or foundry? Sorry.
Foundry.
I was just there today. Foundry, you know, and, you know, the grocery stores across the street, you know, the, uh, Houston's apparently is one of the most highest grossing Houston's in the, in the, in the U.S., as I understand it, you know? So we we think the retail is really viable if it's designed well. A lot of people don't do it, it's an afterthought, but we put a lot of time into it, so.
Okay. I'm done.
Robert, go ahead.
I think my major question is on your commercial, what you just raised.
Is what?
I, is is on the commercial, the mixed-use part of it. Um, everybody knows me here that I'm I'm high and tight. You put as much density as possible, I don't care if you get a bonus or whatever, need housing here. What I get concerned with is that these extended densities with this mixed-use component, starting to get to a point where the mixed-use component is, A, it's just a cost of doing business. We'll put it in, we're not gonna fill it. And and that's what's happening, is they're not filling these, not because they can't, it's because they just price them out. It's it's just a cost of doing business. They don't wanna have to deal with it, with with having retail shops in there. And so they price them out of the market, or they never return phone calls. I've recommended people to go move into some of these mixed-use places. They're like, the guy won't call me back. They don't, they don't want to rent.
I think it has to do with the design. I mean, I've worked for some firms that 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 don't like retail, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And a lot of times they don't pay attention to to the design, so they're not really commercially viable spaces. Again, like a lot of people will build a parking garage, and they'll say, hey, you have to line the garage, and they'll put a little twenty-foot strip down there, and nobody, you know, that that's not a viable retail plan, you know? So, um, getting revenue for the retail, um, you know, it's forty-five bucks a foot, you know, we 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 need the revenue for the retail, um, and and we intend to lease it. I mean, we're, we're, it's a big part of our business plan, is to sort of get that, um, value add from the residential experience, so.
So, I mean, what are your strategies on getting, I mean, help me also when we get other applications in here. What are your strategies that I'm seeing all over Pompano now is just, hey, we just put in this mixed-use component-
I think there's three or four things.
To make Gene Dolan happy.
Yeah, it's getting from the garage to the retail. A lot of people don't think through that, but I think we have here this Paseo, right? You're gonna walk from the garage through a pleasant courtyard, through a Paseo to the retail. So the path of travel for the customer is a big thing. Service is a big thing, so making sure you've got access to trash from the, you know, through the back of house corridor that, you know, George has drawn here, that little, that little brown thing to the trash, right? We thought through that, I mean, that's a big thing. The depth of the restaurants, making sure that they're deep enough to have kitchen and seating, you know, that they're designed appropriately. To your point, ceiling heights, facades, differentiating the facades. Pulling the building off the outdoor seating was a big thing. A lot of people just running straight to the side of the sidewalk, and you've got like a five-foot sidewalk and a couple bistro tables on Route One, and it's like, it's not very pleasant, so. I mean, I think it's just that, you know, there's four or five things that if you think about it from a design perspective upfront, you know, it makes it really viable, and it really does add, it's a value add. But if I'm in your shoes, and I am, I'm on a planning commission in my hometown in Decatur, in Atlanta, um, that's something we talk about a lot, is just making sure that they're doing it right.
So you're you're installing all the all the exhaust fan work into a restaurant?
I think it's going vertically, right?
Okay.
Very important.
Different city than Pompano. I mean, there's a lot of corporations, and we don't have the same kind of we don't have corporate, corporate corporations.
Alpharetta was a three hundred thousand square foot, you know, I mean, it drew from five hundred thousand people from like a twenty, you know, I think it was forty-five minute drive. I mean, that's a regional mall. I mean, this is like two or three restaurants. I hear you, I mean, I'm not trying to say this is Avalon. I'm just saying in terms of the experience we bring, we like retail, but I think you're right. I mean, this is probably two, three, four restaurants, and maybe two restaurants and a hair salon, and then it'd be a coffee shop, you know, it's, I guess, manageable.
So you visualize, you said you're from Decatur?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, so you visualize Leon's there or something?
Oh, totally, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I live like a half mile from there.
Do you? My my niece lives right across the street, and that, those condos just east of there.
Done.
And has since a long time, but anyway.
I had, I had just a couple of questions.
Huh?
I have a couple of questions.
You have a question?
Yeah.
You can go.
Uh, have you, have you, uh, have you guys done any projects in South Florida?
Um, I did when I was with Fairfield. I built the Maria project on the port, on the on the park, um, but Portman has not. It's a strategic market for us.
My question really kinda leads to communication with the residents. So what is the plan with that, just in terms of construction and?
In terms of communication with the, with the nearby neighbors?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we would endeavor to meet the the Harbor, what is it, Harbor Island?
Harbor Village area, yeah.
I'm showing the-
Cypress and Cypress.
And we would have a third-party GC, like VERX.
You know, there's been a lot of development here, and, you know, I think there's a lot of disruption with all the development. So, you know, I know we'll we'll hear the noise and, you know, all that, and just making sure that that, we communicate to the residents properly and-
Yes.
They understand timelines, they understand process.
I think we'd be happy to meet with the neighborhood and-
Yeah, thank you.
Really proactive about that.
Okay. Anybody else? Good down there? Good over here? You want, you, do you wanna, what, what are you thinking? We wanna dig in on the-
Well, I I think that 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 there is support here to do a thirteenth, um, condition. And I was, um, I've gone back and forth on it, but, um, I've I've listened to you and I've listened to my colleague on the left over here, and and I think we ought to add a thirteen that that says, you know, you either, uh, uh, charge for parking or do assigned spaces. That covers anything you wanna do.
Yeah, well, it allows you, if you, if that's ever your model, then you can sell it to somebody. We don't wanna stop you from running your business. Just wanna protect our city.
Um, this, there we go. So you want the condition to be, to be worded?
We want you to wordsmith it instead.
But we want two things taken, two potential things. One is the way they're, they say they're gonna do it, which is-
Lees, leases will include, uh, uh, a charge for parking, a charge for a parking space, or, um, the operator will do assigned parking.
All right, I'm I'm going to read it back to you.
Sure.
But so give me a minute to write, jot down a few words.
Sure.
Because if I don't read it or write it, then tomorrow morning when I'm writing it, I'll be like, what are the exact words again?
Yeah, well, okay. Yeah. Now, we can talk about that. I think they already said they had that, but. Well, let's finish the condition, I don't, it's, get-
Okay, parking spaces in the garage will be either, one, assigned to residents, or, two, a fee will be charged per space or?
That's the way you would do it, yeah.
Does that work for you?
There, well, that's a good point.
Yeah, residential, residential, yes.
Right, yeah.
Residential.
They'll have to worry about the other part themselves.
Yeah.
With a minimum of one space per unit.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, we're not gonna say that because-
Okay, you're right. So not with any minimum per unit?
No.
Okay. Parking spaces in the garage will be, residential parking spaces in the garage will be either, one, assigned to residents, or, two, a fee will be charged per space.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
So- The bridge, twelve is the bridge, yeah.
And the Mailla Bridge across the street is one level and open. That's exactly what we're gonna do.
Cool. I love my bridges, I just like, I think it's cool. You can tell, I have a grandfather who was a civil engineer. Built the first bridge over Los Solos Boulevard, do you believe that? Pretty neat, huh? Anyway, that's just me talking. Okay, um, so it said, what was the thing about, there was some just quick discussion about suspended paving or something, uh, which is condition eight?
I think it actually is on the plans. I think that just means the, the, the street trees have to be in a special kind of paving so that they don't-
So, yeah, so they don't unroot the?
I think it's on our landscape plan, but it didn't make it onto the, a different plan, but it's our intent, so.
Okay.
The reason we want it on the paving grading and drainage plan is because if it's just on the landscape plan, the trees go in after all of the drainage, after all of the civil work is done. And so that's when we need them to to coordinate, to make sure that suspended pavement is in place.
Okay, so they're just gonna add it to the other plan?
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna mimic what's on the landscape plan, it's just gonna get moved over there. Everybody's good with that? Okay. Um, and we talked about John's stuff, so I think, um, okay. Is, was there anything else? I know, I know we're, we all, it's funny because we wanted to cut down on the conditions and we added two, yeah. But we wanna make sure, we just are trying to be super careful. This is gonna be a great project, okay? But but we wanna make sure that the the handful of things that we want are gonna work out.
No, thank you. We're excited, appreciate the dialogue.
Okay. Anybody else got anymore? We don't have anybody in the audience because Tom McMahon said he was not getting up tonight. So there. Yeah.
Mr. McMahon sent in his comments.
He emailed them in, okay. There you go, so now I'm closing the public off, okay. Um, and with that, it, it, the chair will entertain a motion unless, uh, unless there's more discussion. Oh, well, I guess we actually have to start on 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 the, uh, on the major administrative adjustment first. We didn't add anything to that, right?
No.
It is what it is. Okay.
Did you ask him whether he was okay with the three conditions?
Yeah, they said before they were okay with the three conditions of that as well. I'm pretty sure Mike did, so I remember. On the administrative adjustment, you said that the three conditions are fine. Yeah, okay. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. We don't, oh, here you go. Somebody fell down on the job. Oh. Oh, look at that, the buck passed here. Did you see that? Whoa.
I would suggest that the the board utilize the same quasi-judicial, um, components that are raised, um, on your cheat sheet.
Yeah.
So you can choose the same one and just make sure that the verbiage matches the actual motion. As an example, it would be in consideration of the P and Z application. I move that the board finds that competent substantial evidence has been presented, satisfies the review criteria, and approve the major administrative adjustment-
Right.
With the three conditions, um, proposed by staff.
There you go. Go, Robert. The attorneys are cheating again. It's great.
In consideration of P and Z application number two-five dash one-six-five four-zero-two, or zeros two. I move that the board finds that competent substantial evidence has been presented that satisfies the review criteria and approves the major administrative adjustment subject to the three conditions provided by staff.
You're the man.
Second.
And we got a second. Okay? No, yeah, we already got one.
Oh, never mind.
We got a third. Okay. Um, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Bobby call the roll on whatever item that is, three.
Robert Hartzel?
Yes.
Paul Fisher?
Yes.
Rich Dally?
No.
Gigi DeBeck?
Yes.
Karyn Worley?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes. Okay, um, Chair will entertain a motion on item number, uh, three.
Kind of roll, Robert.
Yeah, it just, it's the same thing, except just it is major.
I'll go for it.
Go.
In consideration of P and Z application number two-five-one-two-zero-zero-zero-one, I move that the board finds that competent substantial evidence has been presented that satisfies the rev, review criteria and approves the major site plan subject to the thirteen conditions by staff.
Well, eleven by staff and two by us, but that's okay. It's late. Okay. Second, somebody?
Second.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second for, um, approval of, uh, item number three. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Bobby call the roll on item number three, please.
Robert Hartzel?
Aye.
Rich Dally?
No.
Gigi DeBeck?
Yes.
Paul Fisher?
Yes.
Karyn Worley?
Yes.
Carla Coleman?
Yes.
Fred Stacer?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Thanks for hanging out with us, we're kinda late tonight. Okay. All right, let's see, where are we? I got so many marks on this.
I know, I can't find my- I know, I can't find my.
Okay. Audience to be heard, does Tom McMahon want to speak? No, okay, he's gone.
He's not, he's still sitting.
Oh, he's still there? Oh. Hi, Tom. Okay. Reports to staff. You're, you're good? Okay. Oh. Man, you've been talking all night, what's up with you today?
You're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair.
Okay, what's up?
All right, so as, as I mentioned earlier, um, I, I wanted to make sure this board understands the use of social media. Tonight was a perfect edu, perfect education, um, if this board was not all already aware. You have to be very, very careful, um, the, the law does not prohibit you from your personal engagements, um, you know? Using social media, you're sharing pictures, you're sharing stories, you're living life, not a problem. Because you are public officers, um, the, the statute, the law in general recognizes that you're in a different spot. So when you're communicating on social media, it carries a different context, particularly when the items that you are discussing are items that may come before you. So you always want to be very careful because it may not be distinguishable that you are speaking personally from you speaking as a member of the board. So the wisest thing you can do is not engage. It, it's always been on those subjects that will come before and the reason I mention this is because we have the downtown that will definitely come this way. All the major projects that involve planning and zoning in the city are gonna come through this board, so you, I understand the personal dedication and feelings that you may have related to those issues, but you must be careful, um, not only that, but you, in any context, you want to be careful because there are ethical standards by which you must comply. Um, and someone may say that you are utilizing your position abusively, um, you, which is common in face, in, in social media, is for people to get into a, a give and take and all of a sudden now you're speaking and you're dealing with an issue that all of a sudden, whether or not you've used the proper decorum may come into question. Not saying that anybody in this board, um, has a colorful language, but you may feel that you have that ability when you're dealing with your own personal social media account. That too can come into question. So again, you want to be very, very garters in the social media context. Tonight, um, one of the board members asked me, he said, and I, Mr. Hartzel, you questioned the applicant who, you know, basically made comments and, and I understand why you said that. However, but you got to recognize in quasi-judicial matters, when you're engaging in those social media arenas, you open yourself up for cross-examination, for someone to bring the printout and go, hey, you said this and you said that and you said this. They can do that because the applicant is challenging your ability to be unbiased and unprejudiced to their application. And so you must be very careful because that exchange can take place and there's nothing you can do about the record, let me also say that, because when you're engaging on those subjects that potentially may come before you, it's a public record and you can't delete it, you can't make it go away. So the best thing to do, my advice, is not to engage in those, um, and, and be very careful because again, the decorum is an issue, the ethical involvements are an issue, it, it, it draws a spotlight on you and rather than be involved in that, you've got two choices, either to go, and I use this phrase because we said, to go dark or silent, or you may really have to consider whether or not your board participation should continue, because again, this is a level where you are held to give due process to those applicants who come before you. Okay, so if you have a question, I, I tell everybody, if you've got a question about whether certain action you take may be perceived or may be in some kind of violation, please call me. I think most of you all, if you don't have our office number, some of you may even have my cell number, feel free to give me a call. And I always tell people, make sure you give me a little time to respond, but I try to get back to you, but, but please call me, I'd rather you be proactive than for us to kind of try to clean up after the fact, it, it doesn't work as well. Okay? There, if there are another, if you, again, if you want to talk about something personally, feel free to give me a call and we could talk one-on-one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Dow, do you have any questions tonight?
I do not, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
I just want to echo, staff did amazing job tonight, uh, amazing job, so. I'm sorry, I took your, took your, took your normal comments, but did a really good job tonight, so.
Plagiarize you. Huh? Mrs. Coleman?
Um, Mr. Chair, you had asked me to do a, a brief and I like it very brief. On, um, multimodal, the transportation companies efforts.
Thank you.
Um, just this year have been working with city staff and, um, Himley Horn on developing a scope of work for a transportation master plan for the city of Pompano Beach. That came about because of a task force that was formed, uh, that I had the pleasure of chairing in 2023 because we didn't feel like the land use and transportation issues were melding close enough. And I think that's something you brought up, uh, time and time again on this board. So out of that came a, a committee, a standing committee of EDC to, um, address some of those issues, the city wanting to go forward with the transportation master plan and so we have worked with them and I'm happy to say Max is one of those committee members, that we now have, uh, worked for months and have a draft to them that they agree with, I believe, and in the next few months, we should be seeing it come forth, but it ties from the very beginning of their work, land use and transportation. Land use is not an add-on at the back end, so we're, we're quite excited about that.
Thank you for the report, that's, that's great. Mr. Hartzel, go ahead.
I don't have a report, but I also would like to thank staff. Max, it's good to see you out here once in a while, it's, we miss you. You weren't here for a long time. So, and also I.
Yeah. It's okay, I called you and he was always somewhere else, you know, it's like, I'm in Spain, don't, oh, okay, wow, I'm in wherever, I'm Tennessee now and I was like, dude, do you ever come here? No. Whatever.
But I thought the, the staff reports were good, but I, you know, I, I do think that, I, I do think that, that the condition's gotta be, like, come to us with it, like, everything complete, you know, it's kind of hard for us to go through, you know, we all kind of had our preconceived notions of, you know, once we got here, read the staff report and all that, but like, that's a lot of conditions that should have been included on, in their plans and drawings before they got here, like, for us to start drawing up two conditions too is like, out of thin air is, is tough on us. And, you know, it, these are my colleagues, I, I will defend you guys to the end because I know you guys, um, and I, I'm here for you guys, I hope you're here for me. I think in the end, we always come to the right decision. I don't, I haven't saw any bias at all amongst this group. So that's all I got.
Okay. Mrs. Worley?
I was gonna say, go Gators, but. And just I hope everyone has a wonderful Labor Day weekend, so that's on my report.
Mrs. DeBeck?
Well, I'm gonna say go Irish.
Oh, there you go. And I am gonna say go home.
I'm here, Charlie.